All right, Mayor, we're live.
Hey, well, good evening, everyone. This is our first time doing a virtual meeting. Please let us know if you, if something is not working. We have city staff also observing on Facebook. If you can't hear or anything of that sort, just let us know. We will go ahead and start our special city meeting this evening, Tuesday, March 31st, 2020. It is 7:00. We will say Pledge of Allegiance first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That's lesson learned, how to do the pledge virtually. So first, our general agenda item is to approve Resolution Number 01. Well, let me see.
Mayor, roll call.
We need to do the roll first.
Is Brenda calling, roll?
Mayor, ready?
Here.
Commissioner Butler?
I'm present.
Commissioner Morris?
Present.
Commissioner Hattasol?
Present.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we will move on with our general agenda item. We're going to adopt a resolution to temporarily streamline city operations during the COVID-19 pandemic, and Katie Jackson will be presenting this evening.
Good evening. I'm going to share a screen with a PowerPoint presentation, so I will ask afterward to make sure that you all can see it. I have it ready, ready up here, so are you able to see it? Are you all, maybe not?
Yes.
Yes, you can? Okay, yes. Okay, let me, okay. So I have a short PowerPoint presentation that we'll go through and just to discuss the terms of the resolution that's being discussed tonight. Just as general background, in our form of government, the city manager administers all affairs of the city except as limited by the city commission action. In the event of an emergency, in our form of government and as a municipality, the city commission can act and make declarations and do other things to respond to the emergency, and we're doing that through our home rule authority. We don't have express statutory authority and state law for emergencies, and we could have emergency ordinances in place that address these situations. The City of Manhattan does not have any that are relevant to this situation in place, something we might look at in the future. That doesn't mean we can't act again. We would act through our home rule authority. So there's a couple different types of actions that you might want to take to respond to an emergency. The first one is a resolution related to how the city is operating itself temporarily. And the other one is a declaration, a resolution, or an ordinance that relates to how others, like residents of the city, act or interact with the city. So think of one as internal and one as external. And this matter only relates to the top one, which is this is only pertaining to how the city operates itself temporarily. So why are we considering an ordinance, or excuse me, a resolution? It's so that we can temporarily streamline our agendas and operations. We can enable you, as the city commission, to act as a majority quickly if an issue arises that requires an ordinance, and it also helps the transition to virtual operation. So there's only six sections to this ordinance. It's pretty straightforward. This ordinance, what, I said ordinance, I'm sorry, that's the title, to the resolution. This is a resolution. There are six sections. The first one pertains to ordinances. As you all know, at the city, our practice is that we do two readings of every ordinance. That is not required under state law. That's just a practice of the City of Manhattan. State law requires one reading. And I want to point out, just to those watching, that a reading is the actual vote that is required before it's effective. Saying that we're only going to do one reading of an ordinance does not mean we wouldn't necessarily discuss it. You could discuss an ordinance, have a discussion item to discuss an ordinance, and then, you know, one, two, three, or four times, but the reading is just the action that you take to make it effective. This temporarily would change that practice from two readings to one. That way, if there is an emergency situation that we're required to act by ordinance, you all can do that. Just as a reminder, if we do two readings, that means the commission has to vote twice. On our normal schedule, which is the first and third legislative meeting, it takes anywhere from 20 to 25 days for any ordinance to become effective, because we hold our meetings and we can't, the ordinance cannot come effective until after publication in the city newspaper. We're usually needing to give notice to Mercury about four to five days out. So right now, unless we hold special meetings, on our normal schedule, it takes us 20 to 25 days. If we do one reading, then we're able to take up an ordinance one night, and then as soon as we can get it printed in the paper, it becomes effective the next day. So it can shorten that to five days in an emergency. Note that Section 1 does not require, even though it says that we can do one reading, it does not mean that you all are limited to that. At any point, the commission could table an ordinance and consider it the next meeting, or you could ask staff if there's a particular type of ordinance that you want to do more than one reading on, just let staff know, and we can set up two readings. Again, though, a reading is talking about something official, which is a vote, and it's not a discussion item. Nothing precludes us from discussing an ordinance two, three, or four times before we actually do the vote. Section 2 is limiting live, real-time public comment during your meetings and then the other city board meetings. State law, which is the Open Meetings Act, requires observation, not participation. Manhattan has one of the most robust participation policies in the state of Kansas. Some cities don't even allow public comment at the meetings at all. Most cities allow some, but we are definitely on the far end of participation, which is a value of the city commission. This, this section of the resolution only limits real-time live public comment during our meetings. It does not apply to public hearings. We're going to have to handle those separately, and it doesn't apply or restrict to any other form of communication that the residents may want to talk to you about. They can email you, they can call you, do all the things that you normally do. This section also requires the city manager's office to adopt a process to take written public comments in advance to the meeting that will go to you with it for time to review. So that does allow the public to give feedback on all the items for you to have to consider at the meeting. If you weren't wanting to, you could read one of those public comments at the meeting if it was relevant to your decision, or you cared to do that. So that would be perfectly acceptable. I had the question, and I wanted to respond about how many cities or communities in Kansas are restricting public comment in this time, just during, just temporarily during virtual meetings? And I put out an email to one of our listservs, and these are the responses that I got through the listserv and Googling. It gives you an idea of communities. And then the League of Kansas Municipalities Attorney actually responded to my email and said that, she said that most cities of all sizes are eliminating live public comment during their virtual meetings, just for this short period. Every one of the cities that I've listed, or the communities that I've listed, are accepting written public comment in lieu of live, real-time public comment. Section 3, it just specifically authorizes you to hold your meetings virtually. The COMA, the Kansas Open Meetings Act, has long allowed some type of virtual attendance, but they do ask that it occurs only in extraordinary circumstances, which we're in at this time. So this talks about how the city commission can do remote city meetings and every other city advisory board and board. One thing that's in here that's important, as you all know from your procedure, that we take a motion to adjourn the meeting, or the board chairperson adjourns the meeting, there could be a circumstance in which a quorum is lost or some type of technical connection is lost. If that occurs for 10-plus minutes, the conversation stops when that quorum is lost and when the connection is lost. And if it, if the duration of that lasts past 10 minutes, then the meeting is considered adjourned, because there wouldn't be a way, potentially, for someone to actually adjourn the meeting. So it's declared adjourned if that goes on for more than 10 minutes. Of course, with virtual meetings, the Kansas Open Meetings Act still must be met at all times. We're meeting that tonight and through our other meetings by allowing people to view, which is all that's required by the laws, to view the meeting. They can view this through our PEG channel, Channel 3. They can watch it on the city website, and they can also watch it on Facebook Live. Section 4 just authorizes the city manager to cancel any city meeting quickly when and only when it's deemed necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare. Generally speaking, the manager has the authority to cancel city meetings. However, as a matter of practice and courtesy, the manager often works with the mayor and the commissioners with respect to that, or in the case of our advisory boards, with those staff liaisons and those board chairs. This would be used only in circumstances in which, which something has to be done very quickly. Due to an emergency where we are unable to hold the meeting, he's able to act swiftly on his own accord. I don't, I think a lot of this has been worked out, and the commissioners are aware of the meetings that have been canceled and rescheduled, but this just kind of gives that authority if something comes up for a virtual meeting that is scheduled. Section 5 talks about some additional authorities to our city manager. In our person, in our purchasing policy right now, the city manager has the authority to purchase any good or service up to the amount of $20,000, and this includes a change order up to $20,000. That's a project that you've approved. We are requesting authority to increase that from 20 to 75,000. This section also requires the city manager to report the purchases to the city commission and publish them on the city website for that, so that transparency is maintained. Right now, many of these purchases are on the consent agenda, and many of them, not all of them, but many of them are, are approved without a lot of discussion, but they are certainly approved with commission oversight and public knowledge, and we would maintain that by putting that on the city commission, excuse me, by reporting them to the commission and publishing on the city website. I just note as an aside that the commission and the managers have talked before about increasing this as a standard. Manhattan's purchasing level for a city our size is, is very low. Typically, in Kansas, the cities are anywhere from 75,000 to 100,000 for city manager purchase authority. So while it does seem like a large increase from 20,000, it really puts us in place with other first-class cities in their normal purchasing authority. And then I just want to put a note that the department head, the department head limit would increase from 10,000 to 25,000, but the department heads are also required to report all those purchases to the manager as part of this. The other thing that this section does that's really critical that we're asking is that it would allow the city manager to suspend procurement processes. The procurement policy has different processes in place depending on the value and the type of service. They're typically designed to allow competition. We're not desiring to eliminate competition, but we recognize that right now it may not be feasible to get three quotes from certain types of providers. They may not be open. There may not be three providers who can respond timely just because of the conditions we're under. And so only in the cases that are listed there, the city manager can procure directly or through a different process, whatever fits the circumstances. So it's only in the circumstance of an emergency purchase when the process is not feasible, and that's like as if, you know, the businesses aren't available, or where it's detrimental to the public or city. If one of those factors is not met, then our policy would be followed to procure those goods or services. And I would also add that this does not, in the going back one, this purchasing authority and this procurement process do not change our Charter Ordinance Number 40 for public infrastructure projects. If those exceed $20,000, those will still be required for the city commission to approve the procurement and approve the word of those contracts. And then the last section is the duration of this resolution. A resolution is effective upon adoption by a majority. It doesn't need to have a second reading, and it doesn't need to be published. These are temporary changes, and it says that a governing body, the governing body can take action at any time to amend or repeal any aspect of this, and you can do that with one, one meeting, one action. It's not dependent upon any kind of emergency declaration of the federal or state government, so you retain all the discretion to change this as you see fit. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt this resolution that relates to the internal operation of the city and the governing body processes temporarily. And that's all that I have from a presentation standpoint, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Just remember to unmute.
Okay, thanks, Katie. I believe there are several questions, and then we'll take some, read off some of the public comments as well on this. Are there commissioner questions as it pertains to this general agenda item?
Yes, Win Buller, I just have, you know, three points that I wanted to add. On, on Section 1, on second reading, I would like to see it where a commissioner could require an item to be read a second time if it's some critical thing, but generally, I think I don't have any problem with it. On, on Section 5, just as a matter of course, because I'm on the law board, I think the RCPD director has a $75,000 limit on purchasing, and this would put the city manager in line with that. And then lastly, you know, it says a temporary resolution. Should we put three months on it or four months, just to have an end date? Because temporary is forever unless we actually put an end date, so those are the only three things I have for consideration.
Right, I have similar questions, but are there commissioner comments or questions? Mark, did you want to say something?
You need to unmute. Yeah, I was just curious about the length of time, too, and I don't, I,
Right.
Maximum of six months, I would think, but if, hopefully, well, by then, things will be reasonably normal again, but I, I'm not sure if Katie didn't put a date in there. I'm not sure what her reasoning for that was, an end date.
Katie, did you, did you have a reason not to have an end date on there? Should be, can we decide that this evening?
You can certainly allow, have it sunset, whatever the commission would desire. I just didn't put it in there to give you maximum flexibility as a starting point, but we could, we can do a sunset date, which you could still repeal it before then.
Okay, thank you.
Linda Morris, I wanted to just clarify, the city manager's memo says that he already has the authority to act in emergency situations. So if that's true, then why is this needed?
So he, so as, sections 1, which, which relates to the number of readings that you do, and 2, which is the public comment, and 3, which is remote participation, all of those relate to how the governing body runs itself. And those are based upon the 2018 resolution that you adopted that has the governing body policies and procedures. So those three actually don't pertain to city manager authority. Those pertain to 4, 5, and 6, well, I guess it's just 4 and 5. 4 is just to make clear that you're, you're allowing the city manager to cancel a meeting in an emergent situation. Section 5, the reason we have to amend it is because you have limited the city manager's authority with the policy resolution that sets the purchasing policy and procedure. So what you're doing there is you've already given the manager some authority under there that's up to 20,000, and you're expanding that up to 75,000. And because you've done that by resolution before, you have to adopt a resolution to expand that authority now.
Katie, could you just elaborate on the emergency ability that Ron has versus what you're doing tonight?
Sure, so, so, again, all of the emergency actions we're talking about in the context of this resolution relate to how the city runs itself. We're not talking about anything that the city might impose on the residents of the City of Manhattan. This is all how the city functions. And our city, the city commission manager form of government and our ordinances state that the city manager has, and I'm looking at the ordinance, it says, he has, he's responsible for the administration of all the affairs of the city. That includes the ability to make emergency decisions for how the city runs itself. What, the reason that we need, we're asking for his authority to be expanded is you have by resolution limited his purchasing authority, and we're expanding that purchasing authority tonight because of the emergency.
Except, this is Linda again, Linda Morris, except for the title of the ordinance, it doesn't speak a lot to periods of emergency, as I read through the ordinance. Is that, so I was more interested in tying these individual provisions to a situation that involved a county or state declared emergency. But I also, and that was important because there was no specific expiration date, but if we are, would agree, will agree to a specific expiration date, then it would seem that the, the state of emergency, I suppose, doesn't have to be repeated multiple times. But I also think this state of emergency is important, because I recall during the flood of 2018 on Wildcat Creek, we are, the city is still claiming reimbursement from FEMA and taking actions that has to do with that flood. So I, although the coronavirus does not damage our infrastructure, but I do want to make sure that the matters related to this emergency situation can be taken care of. I don't think all of this has to be in effect to authorize a paving of a skimble, or, so I'm reluctant to approve it on and across the board basis, but anything to do with this state of emergency is, is certainly something I'm willing to support. The two-meeting policy, I just consider that a, a standard, I'm, it, it just gives the public less time to think about or comment. It gives commissioners only five days instead of having the two readings and the time in between. It, it also kind of restricts the ability of the commission to make changes to an ordinance and have the staff bring it back at a later time to make sure the wording meets the expectations that the commissioners had. So that's, those are things I've been thinking about. But I do agree that a one-meeting proposal during this time of emergency would be important for, in order to, for efficiency and to move forward. I would agree to that.
This is Win Buller, I wanted to add a couple, I think this is a resolution, not an ordinance, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And so we need to make that clear. It's, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. You know, I would suggest putting, you know, a timeframe on there. I agree with that, you know, fully, like, like maybe one August and say until soon proceeded sooner, but maybe extended if required, because that, that's the idea behind it. Then the other reason, you know, I go along with the idea that, you know, let any commissioner, just like we do on the consent agenda, where you can say, I'm pulling this off the consent agenda and putting it on the regular agenda, to pull an item that's for us and say, I'm going to pull it and require a second reading. Let any individual commissioner do that, because that way, if you've got concerns or the public's got concerns, and I think back to the smoking ordinance, if there hadn't been a second reading, we would have inadvertently banned smoking at the country club golf course and on patios, and that got changed because people just weren't aware of it. So that would be a stopgap, but I see that happening rarely, just like we rarely pull things off the consent agenda. And then the idea that, you know, this puts a lot of authority for Ron to make decisions, and I don't want to make things sound worse, it's bad enough, we're dealing with a virus. But what happens if a windstorm comes in here? Or, or like happened to Jonesboro, Arkansas, a tornado goes through. City manager's got to have this authority, because where we're operating right now, we'll never be able to react. And so he may have to do it, infrastructure things, not for coronavirus, but you know how the Kansas wind is. And so that's the other thing that crossed my mind, you've got to, you know, this builds into contingency. And, and so I'm for doing it with, you know, that provision of let any commissioner pull an item off and say it must go for second reading and put maybe a one-August, you know, sunset date unless we end it sooner or decide to extend it.
This is Linda again. I'd also like to make the case that we could permanently change the policy about how we label meetings. We don't have to keep with the, having the first and third Tuesdays of the month legislative and second and fourth work sessions. It would be easy to combine them. We've actually been seeing them on our agenda combined for a while, so that we could act faster if we had the legislative meeting each, each, they have two, you know, two different, a couple of different segments on each agenda that, so that's another way for us to be more agile and not drag it out 25 days like Katie said. That, that would be another remedy for, to be more efficient.
Aaron, did you want to say something?
Hi, I just wanted to say, I agree, August 1st was what I was thinking as a timeline, and that, I don't, I don't, I only say that because I feel like it's necessary for us to have a, be forced to talk about this again, not have it come up, trickle up, and if there's concerns and just, I would like to have that target date set as August 1st. It gives us plenty of time, it gets us through at least the first part of the weather season, and we can look back at it again. The concerns that Linda, Commissioner Morris has brought up are, I think, valid, but I, I do think we need to act now so we can get something in place and we can revisit it. And at any time, we can refine this, it's not, it's not beyond our capability of refining this before August 1st.
Right, so some of my thoughts on this, and then we will discuss again and open for public comments that were presented. I think I went through each section at a time, and let me look at my notes here. So in Section 1, I, to read the ordinance, the city staff present particular ordinance twice. As far as the one reading, one of the things we discussed when the coronavirus, we knew we were going to have to make some changes in the way we meet, was also to have the crucial items, such as ones that require a lot of financing, or ones that we need more public input from a variety of areas, to put those off on a back burner for as long as possible so that the community can interact like they do at regular public comment. So some of the, for lack of a better word, mundane items, we wanted to move forward with, and especially emergency cases in this situation. So I think for the first reading ones during this period, that's what I would consider, because a lot of the advisory boards are also not having their meetings, so we can't tackle anything without their recommendations either at this time. As opposed, as for the deadline for this, I think a temporary, when I was thinking more like June 1st or the first week of June, because we're going to start talking budgets here pretty soon. And I think we need to have a clearer vision. If we don't have something by then, we need to think a little bit broader at that time if the coronavirus is still very much part of our life and we are still doing virtual meetings. So I think we need to revisit, at least by June 1st, when we start talking budgets. I'm not sure that the timeline on that has been moved at all by the state. I think everything is still due by August or whenever, so we need to start having those discussions. Part 2 about the suspend live and real-time public comment, I think one of the things we do best is doing our public comments. The way we did it this time, having them mail it to us and making sure we read it out loud when we have a public comment is one way to do it. We decided not to do the Facebook Live one. Signing up, I don't know if we can do phone calls. I'm not sure that's something we want to look at. But once again, we need to be clear that it is comment. We never did a question-answer dialogue of sorts. So I like what we're doing now. I'm comfortable with this. What we would like the public to do is email us after this meeting and see how it worked for them, and, and work with that piece of it. Let me see, this is a good idea? Okay. The remote meetings, public comment. You would discuss the technology piece, cancellation of public meetings. Okay, it says the city manager has the unilateral authority to quickly cancel meetings, particularly if city personnel or resources become compromised, and we need to prioritize certain critical operations. The unilateral authority kind of concerns me. I think in the age of texting and everything else we have, I think it would be good to do a quick text to at least city commissioners and a mayor or somebody to let them know, hey, we're going to have to cancel a meeting. Because oftentimes, people feel comfortable asking us, well, when we're Because oftentimes, people feel comfortable asking us, well, when we're out there, say, asking us if we're canceling a meeting or what happened at the meeting cancel, it would be good for us to have that information just as quickly as he makes that, makes that decision. I think that's something that I would like to take, what does unilateral mean? Does, without any, without anybody else knowing, I don't know how that works. I don't know if there was any other time he had to utilize that authority. So that, that's my take on it, that he should tell at least the mayor or the city commission before that happens immediately. Oftentimes, we'll say yes, because there's usually a good reason for that. But this, we're talking about the coronavirus situation right now, and that's why we're talking about these emergency systems that we're trying to put in place. Authority for designee and the $75,000. I think if we go with the $75,000 and we have the sunset date, I'm comfortable with that. I, I would consider June, maybe late June, to be the sunset date on that. We don't know what kind of emergency funds are necessary, but I want whatever authority used for $75,000, it needs to be related to the emergency. So if somebody wants a contract for something else during this interim, and it has nothing to do with the emergency, that's not what I want to approve. So this needs to be related to the emergency at hand. I don't, I, I worry that somebody else, because businesses are all over the place right now that we sign on to something and we don't know what we're signing on to. I don't know if that made sense to everybody, but. And the last piece to that is, the cancellation of meetings, and it says the city manager or deputy city manager may cancel public meetings. So I would like to at least be informed of that when that's happening. The last piece is that all powers be granted that the city manager shall be vested in the deputy city manager. If, if our city manager should get ill, yes, then it would go to the deputy city manager. But what if both of them get ill? Is there a line, a sequence that's going to be followed? I think that needs to be in place. Is it Dennis? Is it who? Is it Jared? Is it Katie? I don't know who the next person in that organizational chart is, and I think it needs to be clear about it. Because in, in this crisis, you can get ill at any time and you have to be self-quarantined. So I don't know what that looks like. So I would like that to expand to not just deputy city manager, but what does that organization piece look like? So I think I, yeah, I think that's where I'm at with those provisions in this, but definitely have a sunset date, and also, all of these are related to the emergency that we are under right now, and to be used in that way.
I want to reiterate, though, that we have to anticipate a windstorm, maybe even a flood in the midst of a coronavirus. And so in, in my mind, again, that, you know, the city manager, he's empowered, I agree, he should only use it for the current crisis, but if another one, minor or whatever, comes in the middle of this, he needs to be able to deal with that too.
Well, I think by then it'll probably be more than 75,000, but.
If I, if I could, just real quick, a lot of this resolution was drafted with anticipation of our current events and what could happen in the near term. And it's really from a staffing perspective. We don't have everybody in city hall, and we don't have everybody at all the offices actively working. Now, we have a lot of people telecommuting, they are being productive at home, but the amount of time that Ron has spent in the last three weeks out of this building handling public health issues and coronavirus updates and working with the health department has taken him away from a lot of other daily activities that he does do. We have other people who are also in this circumstance. We are compromised by way of staffing, and that's really what's led us to this resolution, to try to get us to a point where we can act quickly with the resources we have. We can anticipate too, in the next two, four, six weeks, Kansas and Manhattan are going to see more cases. We could have a circumstance in this building that would even restrict us further. That's really the reason we're coming. It's not necessarily to adjust to something in the community, it's about our organization and the resources we have available to us in order to do business. We have accounts payable staff coming in at, at different times, trying to avoid the social contact and interaction, keeping that distance appropriate, but we've also tried to set ourselves up in this building not to have too many people here at one time. We have to maintain that, and, and we actually could get compromised, and that's really, again, a lot of the reason that resolution is in front of you, to allow us to conduct business, take care of what we need to in the community as a result of being short-staffed. And staffing's really, maybe short's not the right word, just staffing duties being different than they normally are. So we needed this action to help us, not only in the meetings, but giving us authority. The $75,000 and below is going to help us tremendously. We are right now going through your April 7th agenda. It has been difficult to get all of us on the same page because we are working remotely, and we're dealing with documents, and we're zooming. It just takes longer to get things done. We have maybe 12 to 13 items in our packet, and it is taking staff a long time just to get through what traditionally would take a day or two. It's taking us longer because communication is delayed, it's through email, you don't have that one-on-one contact. So again, the 75,000 allows us to move some of those items off, and we'll provide that record and report to you, but we'll also be able to work more efficiently in the organization. The other thing I.
Sorry, and I completely understand what you're saying. I don't think anything we've, we're discussing would impact any of that, because I understand any one of us can get ill anytime during this pandemic. I think that's, that's the purpose. Hopefully, anything we said here does not tie our hands in any way and makes it a little bit more at ease, as far as even just the number of meetings we're going to have and canceling board meetings, and trying to keep it as light as possible during this period. And yes, I agree, I think all of these cases are going to get even more, and we're still at the beginning stages, so we may even have to revisit this. It may not even be enough, where we may not even have legislative meetings. But I don't know what that looks like, but I hope we haven't said anything in here, at least, I, I hope I haven't said anything to make it more difficult. I, I just.
I don't think you have, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, it's not necessarily like a windstorm or a flood. Yes, we do have a lot of resources going to those events. This is about efficiently managing the people we have who are capable of getting that work done and have other things going on in the community as well. I mean, I can't reiterate enough how much, how much time and effort Ron has put in just to the COVID-19 response, and other management have as well. It takes away from the other duties that we have within the organization, and it strains them, and this resolution will help us get through that.
This is Ron. I would just like to add that, you know, another piece of that besides our own workforce is the potential to have to contract with specialty providers, folks that we aren't normally calling on for specific purposes, but just a scenario where, you know, if we would lose a lot of operators, we may have to contract with a private company to come in and run our plants. So those are, those are critical components that aren't, that, again, it's, it's difficult to predict what some of those things might be with a pandemic versus a natural disaster. So that, that's really another reason for us to do that.
Mayor, if, when you're, when you're ready, I took notes on your questions and comments, and I'm.
Sure.
I can respond to those, and this includes some of the other commissioners' comments, starting with section one, Commissioner Butler and a couple asked about, a couple other commissioners asked about having two readings at some times for certain ordinances, and I, I don't think we should call it readings, because then you're having a different process to adopt one ordinance. One ordinance only gets voted on once, and another ordinance might get voted on twice, but we can accomplish what Commissioner Butler wants, which the language which is in there, which is that you can table the ordinance and read it again at the next, you don't vote on it, you would vote, you would have your discussion on it, and then you would table it and discuss it at the next meeting. So the end result is the same, it's just acknowledging that a reading is something different than a discussion of an ordinance. And we can make those changes that the commission wants in between two, by the way. So we can also accomplish that concern of, we're getting feedback, we're not ready to vote, we want to see these changes before we vote, that will be accomplished, but we need to call it a tabling to the next meeting so that some ordinances aren't being voted on twice and some ordinance are being voted on once. That's my recommendation, yeah, yeah.
So to table something, do you have to have three votes to table it? His point was, is one commissioner with one vote could postpone the vote on it to the next time. Does the tabling process require a 3-2 vote to agree to table it?
Yes, it does. In, in your process, somebody has to make a motion to table the ordinance, it has to get seconded and voted on, because the commission can only act as a majority.
Okay.
And this is temporary anyway, right? I mean, then, because this is all due to what's happening around us right now, so.
Yes, and I'd like to know also, to address your concerns about more than, if we do have an ordinance that we think is going to be, we want public feedback and we really need that time to discuss it, we can schedule it as a discussion item the first time, give you an ordinance draft, get all that feedback, and then bring it back for the reading with those changes. I just want to make it very clear, we're not trying to eliminate the opportunity for you to discuss it multiple times, or the public to give you feedback. All we're doing is saying that the, the actual reading, the, the vote that makes it effective, we only have to do that once. And.
I, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that, you know, because I understand, I think we're all smart enough to figure out which are the controversial ordinances, and, and, and a lot of the things are routine that pile up on that consent agenda, and, and I'm all for that. I just wanted to be sure that the, the real hot ticket items at least get discussed, you know, before we bring them up to the first reading, and then if all else fails, we can still try to get three to agree to table it if it's not to our liking. So I'm willing to give that a shot.
Well, because it's temporary, I'm okay with it, because there were things that I thought were a done deal, and because they were on a first reading, we had to roundabout at scenic, let's say, or Peace Memorial Auditorium, how many times did we come back to things like that? So things like that, but I don't think those are the items I'm thinking about during this duration. Those items, we, like, I didn't know about the roundabout, but I, I thought that was a done deal, but those are not the type of items we're going to talk about in the next two or three months.
I, I will say that looking at other cities who have done this as well, or who already only have one reading, which a lot of them don't have two readings anyway, they only have one, they, they're, the things that were, where we want more public input, they're just delaying it until the public can be involved and participate in the meeting, unless it's critical, because they do want to facilitate as much public comment as, as possible. So I think that we would recommend that as well. I do want to follow up on Commissioner Morris's comment about special meetings. She's right, we can set special meetings. We do, however, have a resolution that says our legislative meetings are in the first and third Tuesdays, so we could have a special meeting two, two days or three days later, but it's going to be a special meeting, which means we have to follow the special meeting notice provisions. And then also, there is an additional, you know, there's an additional strain for staff and commissioners in terms of trying to turn that around really fast. So that power exists, but our, our, our process does say legislative are on first and third Tuesdays, so any legislative meeting we set outside that has to follow the special meeting notice rules, which is just an additional thing to think about. I wanted to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Linda Morris, I was thinking that we could change that original resolution so that the, there's not that strict division between legislative and work session. So we could be more nimble, and so, yeah, there's enough, I mean, it's not unheard of to change a resolution, and I didn't bring it up for tonight. That's something for us to consider as we think ahead. My original thinking had to do with creating these permissions during times of emergency also, and not just going on indefinitely, but, so whether it's a tornado or a flood or whatever, when there's an emergency, the city manager has the powers to do these things. But on a regular basis, we, you know, tend, I'm perfectly willing to consider some simplification of some of the processes on a regular basis, but I just don't think we have to take all of these measures and apply them to everything long-term. Yes, for the temporary period, but not long-term. And I know, I've seen it before, that the commission says they'll, I like the idea of an expiration date, because I, my sense is that the commission, it's, it's, what is it, un, it's a path of least resistance to just allow things to continue on because there haven't been any big issues, so, but, so just having said that, I, I did have another thought or two. I only went through section one because I thought we would each reply to section one, but I, I need to go on with the remote meetings, and that is to just say that I hope that we can find some kind of an application that will allow in-person public comments. That's important to me, and I believe it's important to the people in our community. So if this remote business goes on for a lengthy period of time, and I don't think it looks like this is going to be over in three to four months, we may still be withdrawing to our homes for safety, then I, I think we need to explore and see if there are some other ways to do it, to allow the public that input. But I would agree to it on an emergency basis, and that's what this is. Cancellation of meetings, I, well, if, if the term unilateral bothered me a lot, and I, I believe that the city manager should make the decision with the concurrence of the mayor cooperatively, and seldom is there something so major that, or the mayor pro tem in the absence of the mayor, that, you know, the way we've done things, I think. That granting the city manager, I agree to the 75,000 limit during this emergency period. I called it a declared emergency, but I can, I, I view it as temporary. I, we're at 20,000, I can easily accept 50,000 as the next step. I remember when I was first elected, Ron Fear, we've talked about it, those, that's five years now, and so I'm willing to make that next step, but I want to err just on the conservative side. I think we have to have a structured process, I agree with that. I do am, and am concerned about this coronavirus and, in this instance, and the line of succession, and making sure that that flows smoothly. So granting the deputy manager, the, those, those same powers, you know, at first I was taken aback by it, but I, I think I can accept that now, but the 75,000 is more than I want to accept on an ongoing or permanent basis. I accept it on a short term. And purchasing process, I think it's good to have the, to have Ron be able to cancel, because he evidently, we learned a couple of months ago, doesn't have the authority to cancel that, and I think he, he should be able to do that. But with regard to the, and I would like a report of whenever he has to take that action, especially when it's a project that the city commission has approved, and the change orders are bothersome, because we all know how they have prepped up on certain projects over time also. So I'd like to have change orders at least reported to us, because those projects are so, on the big ones, I'm not talking about the $50 ones. So, let's see. I would like for the commission to review this again, and I, I'm not clear necessarily when that has to happen, whether it's August 1 or September 1, so, but I, I would agree to putting a date certain for the expiration date. Have us consider it again and, you know, renew it in a non-emergency, when we're not feeling the pressure of an emergency like we are now. Thanks, that's it.
Thanks, Linda. Katie, did you want to go on with your responses?
Sure, just a couple other notes that the commissioners brought up, and I'll include Commissioner Morris says section four, the word unilateral authority to cancel meetings, that's in the memo, it's not in, that's not in the resolution. I, I agree, what this is doing is allowing.
I, I agree, what this is doing is allowing the manager in an emergency to cancel it. If he can't get a hold of other people, I think he would, as a matter of course, notify the mayor and the commission and the public that the meeting has been canceled. We need to do that. This is also broader than just the city commission meetings. It includes other city meetings. We've had some really engaged boards who still want to meet because they, they really believe in their cause, and it hasn't been feasible from a public health or staff perspective. And so this kind of allows the city manager to make that call, even if the board chair or the whole board wants to meet, he can overrule them. And the staff liaison only when, and again, only when it's deemed necessary for public health, safety, and welfare. He can't just cancel it willy-nilly. And then your concern about notification, I think, I think that would be incumbent to notify the public and that those have been canceled. And then the last thing I do want to point out to clarify under the purchasing provision, under the existing purchasing policy, the city manager has the authority to make emergency purchases that relate to the emergency well above $20,000. So whether it's a purchase like Ron described, Ron Fear described, where he described that they might have to hire a company to, like, run the wastewater treatment plant, that would be, if this resolution were adopted, he'd still have the ability to do that, because it is related to the emergency, and that's in your current resolution. And the same is true if there's a windstorm, he could make an emergency purchase over 20,000 related to that. What section five is doing is a little broader. It ties back to what Jason was suggesting, which is what we're trying to do is take these routine purchases that are usually on your consent agenda, that take staff time to prepare the memo, to prepare that. We're trying to focus staff on emergency response to the COVID-19 tasks that they have. And then, like Commissioner Butler said, another emergency could arise during this time. So we're trying to say those non-emergent, but routine purchases up to 75,000, he could approve. I just want to clarify for the commission and the public, our city manager can approve a purchase that is directly related to the emergency already under your resolution. And I, I think that if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer it. I think that might cover the notes that I had.
So, so for clarification, once again, he already has the authority to go above 75,000 in case of an emergency, is that right? Is that what I hear you saying?
But only for a good or purchase that is specifically to address that emergency.
Okay.
Only for that, yeah.
The authority that we're granting in this resolution is for routine items that are not related to the emergency?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. I think with $75,000, if it is a routine item, and it is not related to the emergency, why wouldn't you have a bidding process?
The, the, the city manager would still have to follow the competitive process in the purchasing policy for that item. The only time that he can suspend or amend that is if it cannot be done, it's infeasible, or it's detrimental to the city. So the default would be, he would need to follow the competitive process for that purchase. But if we're, he's reaching out and he can't, we can't implement that because we don't have the time, or because there's not the firms to respond, then he can suspend it temporarily for that purchase. But the default is to follow the process. Still, yes.
Because my concern is, I don't want to have a purchasing, an authority of $75,000, seeing what happened at RCPD, where they were able to approve a contract without having an actual bidding process for something that was not an emergency. Is that what we're talking about here? Because it's not emergency-related, but it has the authority of $75,000?
That, so, that's a good, that's a good question. So if the purchase is for infrastructure, what we call a charter ordinance number 44, any kind of infrastructure project that's not an emergency, construction, design services, all of that is still going to have to be procured pursuant to the charter ordinance before the city commission, all of that. If there's some type of service that's not an infrastructure construction project or related to that, it can be, he can, he will have to follow the purchasing policy to the extent it's feasible, or feasible under the emergency circumstances. So in the case of like a gym membership, well, sure, that's not public infrastructure. I mean, we're not contemplating that as a city, but that's more of a service. And so as an example, if that were less than 75,000, the default would be, he'd have to solicit the competition for that, for the purchasing policy, unless it's infeasible, and then he would, he would be able to directly contract, only up to 75,000, though.
What are the different, Linda Morris, what are the different funds that the city manager does not have to follow the purchasing policy for?
I'm sorry, I missed the different, was it sums?
What are the fund, F-U-N-D, fund, that the city manager does not have to follow the purchasing policy for?
The, the only one, and it's currently in the purchasing policy, is the employee benefits fund.
Okay, and that is not just health insurance.
Health, health insurance. Workers' comp. There are workers' comp.
Yeah, workers' comp too, yeah.
Workman's comp and health insurance. So, okay, I'm just, I'm following up on Yusha's question about the, the expenditure from employee funds for benefit-type things.
The thing, the reason that Ron Fear has been city manager here for almost 20 years is he knows better than to go buy stuff without some significant backing by the city commission. We've kept him on a short lease with the 20,000, and that has kept him out of a lot of potential trouble. But the things that you're worried about is what gets city managers fired on a yearly and daily basis for abusing this thing. And so I have no concerns whatsoever that he's going to misuse this, because he knows his job is on the line if we're dissatisfied with how he's handling this purchase.
Takes strong will to do those things.
But anything in this, if we put a deadline of some kind, we would revisit anyway, right?
Yes, you could sunset it, so it automatically expires on your deadline, unless you repeal it before then, or you can require to revisit on a certain date. I think it, from a commission perspective, just because revisiting it by that date could prove difficult, I would recommend that you just pick an expiration date, which you could, of course, repeal it before then, if you desire.
Okay, that makes it easier. I think one of the things, it's not that, it's not a trust thing. Sometimes I get confused when we don't have some time limits or timeframes. We're talking about expiration dates and such, because Ron is great, but something can happen to Ron. And it takes a lot to build that relationship between whoever else is going to take over. I mean, Jason may or may not be there. There's going to be future city managers that are going to come and look into this. And I do know a lot of other city managers that do abuse their powers. And so I guess the negative part of me taps into more of that, like, what are all of these things that can happen? But because we can revisit this, it might be all right to give that authority, see how it's being used, see what people do with this in this circumstance, especially if we're talking about fewer staff, fewer meetings, but we still have to do routine business.
Yeah, that was going to be my only comment. Again, Yusha, we, we calculated this would, if we did this on an annual basis, it would take 40 to 50 items off our consent agenda that are fairly routine, and would get very little scrutiny, and would put them under the manager's authority. And as we pointed out, we would prepare that report and give that information to the commission every couple of weeks. We, you all approve a claims register every two weeks for all our expenditures, well over $2 million, that we provide you a lot of detail on, but we don't talk a lot about during the meeting. But it is part of every legislative meeting that we do hold. And again, this was an attempt to try to take some things off our plate by way of formally getting ready for you all to consider on a consent item for this period of time where we're short-staffed and resources are strung out, doing other things than they normally do.
Right, I understand. Thank you. Other questions for?
I would like the report that we receive of expenditures to be more user-friendly. And specifically, all of the credit card charges are just dumped in together with no separation, no definition about what they're for. And it's just really hard to read. It's like an old dot matrix printer that has an old ribbon on it. If I had to compare it to something. So I'd like to see that improved, if we're going to be relying on it totally. Thank you.
Yeah, we got some public comments to read.
Katie, did you go ahead and answer all the questions or comments? Did you need more time?
Only if you have any questions I haven't hit.
I think, well, yeah, if somebody wants to read off the public comments that we received on the first consent, first general agenda item, that'd be great.
Jared is at the podium, and he will go ahead and read those for us.
Thank you, Mayor. We received one public comment that was submitted online for item A, which you're considering tonight, right now. It was from Pete Frasco, address 5305 Stonecrest Drive, Manhattan, Kansas. And I'll read the public comment. Sections two and three are contradicted by the emergency funding limit charges and other sections. There are a myriad of technology solutions available that would allow the city to have webcasts with a virtual limitless audience concurrently streamed to Facebook and recording of the proceedings. Moreover, the city could allow citizens to sign up to speak, provided the citizen has the prerequisites for doing so. This has been ongoing for weeks, and is unacceptable that schools could find a solution, but the entire city technology staff could not. It's 2020, act like it. End of public comment.
And there was one more, wasn't there, Jared, from Kathy Hedge from League of Women Voters?
We did not receive a, a public comment that was submitted online. That was the only one that was submitted via, how we provided it on the published agenda.
Okay, maybe I confused people. I gave them three different ways to do a public comment on, on Facebook, because I didn't know if they would go onto it. But this is another public comment that was done. She said, "One of the guiding principles of the League of Women Voters states that the League of Women Voters believes that democratic government depends upon informed and active participation in government, and requires that governmental bodies protect the citizen's right to know by giving adequate notice of proposed actions, holding open meetings, and making public records accessible. With this in mind, the League of Women Voters of Manhattan Riley, Riley County would like to express our concern with two elements to be discussed at tonight's meeting. We believe that citizen input is essential. A virtual platform needs to be selected and put into place so live participation is possible. B, that was a B, because emergency measures can be put into place when needed, we are opposed to dropping our community standard of multiple readings of resolutions. This is a local standard that has served our community needs well." Thank you, thank you for your time. So those were two public comments at this time. Any other discussion by the city commission?
No, I'm ready to go ahead and propose a resolution. And I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution number 033120Alpha, which temporarily changes some aspects of how the city operates its affairs during the pandemic with a sunset date of 30 June.
There a second?
Second, second.
Okay, Brenda, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor, ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
You're on mute.
Commissioner Morris?
She's on mute, just a second.
There you go. You're still on mute.
Okay, after a motion and a second is under Robert's rules, is the opportunity for further discussion.
We don't operate under Robert's rules. I cleared, I cleared that with the city manager.
I know you did.
It's okay, it's okay to offer a moment.
So the appropriate thing to do. And so there's a modified set of Robert's rules. There are a couple of things that I just don't think I can agree with. I want to give the city manager the opportunity, but I'm not willing to just accept this whole resolution as written with no adaptation at all. So I would just say that after the statements I've made, you have a good sense of what's important to me, and so I will be voting no.
Commissioner Haddasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Motion, motion carries four to one.
I have a question. Did we put an expiration date?
Yes, in the motion, and I will provide Brenda with a revised resolution with the June 30 date that Commissioner Butler incorporated in his motion.
All right, I didn't.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will go on to general agenda item two, second, the general agenda. The Economic Development Loan to Chamber Business Assistance for COVID-19 Impacts. And Jason Hilders, our deputy city manager, will present this evening, along with Jason Smith, president and CEO of Manhattan Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor. The action item or the agenda item is on your screen now, and I'll shift over to our agenda memo, which you're familiar with. We have a request from the Chamber of Commerce for a $500,000 loan. That loan is something that the city could fund through its economic development revenues. It is planned for three levels and three tiers of business loans that the chamber would like to administer. They have essentially proposed a four-month period of time before payments would be due.
Jason?
Yes.
Are we supposed to see a PowerPoint?
No, I was just, I just have the agenda item here this evening.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yep. So there is a 36-month payback period with the loan that we are being proposed to make to the chamber. As I mentioned, there are three different tiers that they have. They are going to review those, and they will oversee and collect on all these loans. I mentioned the four-month period of no payments, and then 36 would kick in. So it's essentially a three-year and four-month type of payback timeline. The half million dollars would, as I mentioned, come out of the Economic Development Fund. That fund has a balance today of unexpended cash of around 4 million. Over the next three years, this half million being paid back would have no impact, or very minimal impact, over the next three years, three years. This table was just an example of how those dollars could possibly be used for businesses throughout the community. The three tiers, we just, I just plugged in some numbers with more on the lower end and less on the upper end of the opportunity to reach that $500,000. This could easily be, and it will be, something different. This is really just for an example purposes. In your packet, the chamber has a letter that they submitted, that when Jason speaks, I'm sure he'll cover a lot of this. It talks about just their, their approach and the need within the community today. But they did provide kind of a one-page scenario here, a snapshot of the program that I think they will be getting out, and upon approval this evening, they'll start administering this program. There's a lot of information, good information here, but I think Jason will also expand upon this being a bridge between sources that businesses are being encouraged to pursue, whether that's at the federal level with some of the programs, or the Small Business Development Center that might have some options. But clearly, our local businesses are being impacted by COVID-19 with the stop-work orders and just the social distancing that's impacted so, so many in the community. I know you all have heard from those businesses, and the chamber is here again this evening to represent this request. I would stand for any questions if you have any of staff, or we can turn it to Mr. Smith, and he can present from the. to, um, Mr. Smith and he can present from the chamber's perspective.
Thanks, Jason. Uh, commissioners, do you have questions for Jason right now? Or do you want to wait for Jason Smith?
No, I'm good. We'll just let the, the chamber present.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Jason. Uh, ready for Jason Smith?
Okay. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Um, thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to be here tonight. Obviously, we wish it were under different or better circumstances. Uh, but with us tonight, we have Larissa Shook, who is, of course, our chair for this year, and Darren Solden, who is our, uh, new director of economic development. Um, before we get into the specifics of the ask, I wanted to just briefly talk about how we've approached this crisis since, um, it really got underway earnestly about three weeks ago. We have four full-time staff people who are working with, uh, all of the businesses who call us in the Manhattan region, uh, on identifying programs at any level, state, federal, local, private, public, that might be available to help these businesses survive through these, these tough economic times. Darren's been leading that effort for us. Um, he is, for those of you that don't know, Darren spent six years, uh, as the lead of our local, um, SBDC office, which is, uh, fortunate because, uh, the unfortunate element for us is we don't have a local director right now. We are in between directors. And so Darren being here has really been a, an extreme help for us. And so I've asked him, I've asked if Darren would just briefly talk about the programs that are available so you all could ask any questions. We're still in the process of trying to figure out all the, um, particulars, particularly of the, uh, of the relief package that passed Friday. But, but I've asked Darren to maybe talk a little bit about the programs that are available and, and our interactions with both the SBA, our local bankers, and, uh, our local businesses.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Uh, my first foray off of mute. So can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Welcome.
Um, thank you. Appreciate it, commissioners. And so I'm going to get, give a brief, uh, brief, I guess, a thirty thousand foot view of this from a business relief standpoint. And really want to keep in mind that these things are tiered or structured in a way that, that I'm going to go federal, state, and then ultimately what we're discussing tonight is a, is a local option, uh, that we can add to the toolbox and hopefully be a bridge for some folks to get them to some of these other tools. So as you've probably seen in the news or, or heard from businesses or seen from our chamber communications over the last couple of weeks, um, for about a week and a half now, Kansas has been eligible for economic injury disaster loans through the SBA. Those are, uh, uh, long-term loans up to thirty years, uh, relatively low interest rate, 3.75%. Uh, those can, or there is no, um, no forgiveness of those. That, that's something that you pay back over, over that period of time. Uh, they are calculated in a way that essentially takes into, uh, into account six months' worth of operating expenses and six months' worth of existing liability payments. Business can borrow that amount, um, and then pay it back over a long period of time. That's the SBA's existing program. That's the same as would be applied to, to floods, to hurricanes, tornadoes, and fires, other, other disaster, uh, situations. Um, that recently with the, with the, uh, passage of the legislation on Friday, uh, where there was added a $10,000 advance or, which can become a grant on the front end of that. And so that's getting quite a bit of, uh, play and a good number of questions at this point. Um, I'll cover that here in, in just a moment. But, so that's, that's option one at the federal level. Option two at the federal level was created by the CARES Act as it was passed on, on Friday, and is called the Paycheck Protection Program. Uh, that's PPP is the acronym that's being used for that. And there's a loan for small businesses as defined by the SBA, um, in that, uh, that, that what it's doing, and this is the one that you're hearing some things, uh, about forgiveness or, uh, of a portion of that loan. Uh, it's, it's essentially, the math on that is two and a half months' worth of average payroll, uh, can be borrowed by a business. Um, upon dispersment, an eight-week clock starts and, and then any, uh, payroll, mortgage interest, uh, rent or lease payments and utilities made during that eight-week window, uh, are then forgiven on the backend from the original loan amount. Um, that is numbers impacted somewhat. If you apply for a disaster loan and get the $10,000 advance as a grant, uh, that impacts the amount of your, uh, of your forgivable, uh, loan as well. But again, those are the two programs, um, somewhat tied together. SBA prohibits double dipping, um, so you cannot use both of those programs for the same expense at the same time. Uh, there are some ways that, that ultimately some businesses will be able to utilize both those programs, um, but it's going to be a one and then the other, uh, type of scenario. So those are our two key federal things at this time for employers, for, for small businesses. At the state level, uh, a week ago this past Friday, the, uh, the governor and the secretary of commerce announced the hire program geared towards hospitality, restaurants, et cetera. As you may well have seen, that ran out very quickly. Was on a call with the, uh, secretary of commerce today and, uh, and I think they had pretty much run through all the applications that were able to be funded, um, already, uh, that, that day, that Friday. Uh, ultimately, I think over, over twelve hundred applications and, and we're only able to fund, fund about a third of those. We do have a number of businesses in this local area at Riley and Pawlawn County that were able to access some of those funds. And so I've talked to numerous of those on the phone. That's a positive thing. Um, but again, many folks that applied for that were not able to access those, those state dollars. And then ultimately, as we work our way down from federal to state to local, so we're here tonight to just talk a little bit about how we can, how we can hopefully put something in place at the local level and why that's important is obviously the timing here. Uh, these federal dollars, whether it's through a, a economic injury disaster loan and, and EIDL, or through the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP, um, are not showing up on anyone's doorstep this week, um, and, and may not next week. And so we've got folks that have immediate need and, and Jason will talk a little bit more about that, but we've got folks that have immediate need and are, as we're looking at the suite of options out there available to businesses, um, we see a need for a local option that can help be a bridge to get people to some of those federal programs. Um, another state program is not out of the question. Um, the, the secretary of commerce, they said they are still accepting applications for the hire program at the state level, um, but that there is no guarantee of additional funding down the road. So, so that was a brief overview of the, the business relief side of things. Obviously, there are additional things both at the state level and at the federal level that in, in these plans that impact employees that may have been furloughed or laid off and their, their access and the, the amount of access they have to unemployment benefits. There's a loan program in there to be administered by the treasury that, uh, is geared towards what, what are defined as mid-sized businesses. So 500 employees all the way up to 10,000 employees. We're getting some questions from folks about those. Uh, but the large majority of outreach that we've seen here at the chamber, um, both, both inbound, uh, as, as we've published things and, and people are contacting us, but also as our economic development and membership teams have been reaching out to membership and, and contacting, uh, thus far, I think, uh, over, over four hundred members, uh, is that people are just looking for information. There's some confusion about which program to use, but we're able to provide some of that technical support to them and, uh, and, and help get them in the right track to at least where they can run the numbers for their business and then, uh, help make a, uh, help them get in a position to make a strategic business decision on, on what their next best option is.
Thanks, Darren. Any questions for Darren on those programs?
No. Darren, I, um, I don't know if the other commissioners or Jason others have sat in on that. Are you talking about the, um, the medal webinar with, uh, Secretary Toland this afternoon? Yeah, I sat in on that one. And I heard also Secretary, um, Garcia speak about the unemployment claims and such. So I'm glad we're looking at the local one. And I heard some of the impacts from the state and federal one. Uh, and I think at the federal, they're still trying to figure out all the nuances that go into that. Uh, but I do want to hear more information about what we are going to do local because this is something I'm hearing, um, it's impacting our community in a, in a dramatic manner. So I think the proposal you're putting forth is kind of like a, a bridge to the others. So I just wanted to say that I, I was in on that conversation and I'll add more to that as we move along. Thank you.
I do have, Linda Morse, I do have some questions. Uh, will the loans be available to all of the businesses, uh, like it said Manhattan region or not just chamber businesses, right?
Yeah. So let's, let's talk a little bit about what we're proposing. Um, so I think the, the critical thing for Manhattan area businesses is how do they get connected to these federal programs? Because if you look at the federal programs, and I think Darren talked about this, but the disaster loan is up to $2 million and the new, uh, payroll protection plan is up to $10 million. That's resources that locally we could never put together. So what we started talking about in terms of the needs locally is we have got to get our local businesses connected into these programs. And so we are, as Darren mentioned, we are proactively outreach in a number of businesses. We're trying to get the information out on our, on our social media as well as, as through other means to tell businesses, whether they're chamber members or not, call us and let us try to help you find the appropriate program. In the interim, what we discovered is, and particularly with the first of the month coming up tomorrow, there is, there are going to start being immediate needs that we, that our businesses are facing, so, and we're calling it within fourteen days, that could create a long-term detrimental impact on that business's ability to, to stay in business, uh, over the long term. So, um, what can we do to help those businesses and bridge their, their, um, survival basically to where they can get into the federal programs? And at the same time, while we've connected with them, we can then direct them into the, the appropriate places to start making the application for the federal programs. And in fact, in the application, one of the requirements is what federal program are you applying for? And where are you in that process? Because we really want it to be a bridge. The other thing that I think is important is we're saying up to 5,000. We don't, it's not a $5,000 loan. We're not, we don't anticipate necessarily saying you're applying for $5,000. We, we want it to be very specific about we have this expense that we need to pay within seven days, or this is the long-term detrimental impact it's going to have on our business. And then we will, if, if it's approved, then we will fund the amount of that expense and help them get connected into either the disaster loan program or the payroll protection program so that they can take care of it at least two months or, or longer through this process as well. We don't have enough money privately. We don't have enough money in the ED fund or in any other fund, uh, locally to replace any of these federal programs. It's just, it's just impossible. Um, the other thing that I think is important because, uh, we have gotten some frustration from our businesses and we get it. And it's very frustrating because they did not create this problem, right? And they're suffering for what's going on. But none of the programs are revenue replacement. They are all expense assistance, right? So, um, we're going to help you pay for your expenses. We're not going to pay for your expected revenue for this period of time. And, and that's hard because there are businesses who, if maybe April is their biggest month of the year. And, and so the expenses don't add up to where that goes. This program doesn't address it. We don't think there's any way to address that unfortunately. Um, we're, we're hopeful that, that we're going to continue to see assistance from the state and federal government. But this is mainly to keep somebody's doors open for a period of time that we can get them, bridge them into a, a larger program. We were open, we had these conversations with, uh, with the city staff. Um, we thought it was a good idea for a program. We were open, open to administering it and we'll do it with our team and our current staff. We want to add people, we'll just do it. Internally, we would support it if the city chose to, to operate it. We think it's important, but, uh, we also think we have the ability just for a variety of reasons to move quicker. And our goal would be to get the funds from the time they have a completed application to the time we fund the program. Our goal would be to do it in two business days. I, you know, that may be aggressive, but I think we have to do our very best to try to help. We will have a loan committee that will, uh, Darren and I will make a recommendation to the loan committee. Um, we've asked the city to have a, a staff person on that committee. So a staff person will know who's being funded. Um, but that will not be funded by our staff. That will be done by, by a committee, uh, that will make that decision.
I was curi-, I'm still curious about the, the region and if it, if it covers already lay, uh, companies that have already laid off employees or, uh,
Yeah. So for this particular program, because it's city funds, it would have to be city limits.
Okay.
And so that would be, um, that process. We're not, uh, for the $5,000, which we see is what most of the applicants are probably going to be, we're not putting in a, a requirement for maintaining, maintaining payrolls. I mean, just that, that amount is, I mean, five employees is a quarter of a million dollars a year. Um, $5,000 is not enough to, to make a change in that decision one way or the other. Um, we do have a, a line item for, uh, primary employers, so larger companies that sell products and services outside of the community. And we are asking them to have eighty percent of their employees that they had at the end of the year. We're open to another suggestion there, but, um, there are companies who are seasonal and are up and down. And, uh, so they might've had eighty percent, or they might've had more working at the end of the year than they would have had working in the middle of the year anyway. So that was why we put the eighty percent on that item. But we don't see that really being the one that's in demand. We really see the five, the up to 5,000 probably being the one that's most in demand. And we talked about it today about do we exclude? And we threw out some scenarios of people and, and we're not excluding anyone from applying. And, um, we're going to count on the, the committee to, to decide. Number one, is it, is it something that makes a difference? I mean, is it, is it clear that this is an expense that will create a long-term detrimental impact on the business? And there's no other way to get it funded? And, and this will help them maintain their operations long-term for the, in the community. And I think those are our priorities. And if it is, then I think it'll get funded. If it's not, I think we'll have to have the stamina to reject them.
You're going to be trying to sort out then those businesses that are just barely hanging on, uh, to?
I don't know that that's the, that would be the defining factor. I think it would be, you know, if somebody says, well, I need $5,000 for this, this, and this. And, and we, we get a little more into the conversation and it's clear that if they paid that in three, or three weeks or four weeks, that's not going to make any difference. That we can say, okay, let us try to get the, this funded first through this program. But if, but if we end up coming up on that date and you need these funds, then we'll fund it.
Do you, will you be discerning between locally owned and franchise businesses?
We, we do not have it in there that way. Um, we, you know, we, we could, but that's not how it was, that's not how we wrote it out.
Well, there are places with corporate management and then there's a, or the model of a local franchisee, uh, and then those locally owned businesses. And I think the locally owned businesses would be, uh, interested in competing and not having the big guys just take all the money, I guess, the short way to put it.
And, and again, this is, you know, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, uh, these are unprecedented times. And, and there have been a lot of times when we stood in front of you and said, we'd like to try this, try this, and try this. And there's been best practices where we, we could say with some certainty, we think these are the results that we're going to get out of these initiatives. This is unprecedented. And so we don't really know what we're going to get. And I mean, I would assume that $5,000 is not going to be something that a corporate, corporately owned store is going to want to pursue, because I think it'd be hard for them to prove that a $2,500 bill is going to knock them out of business. I mean, I, you know, I think that, that we are going to be pretty stern on this idea that this is for a specific expense that, that we see as being vital to keep you open. Um, and, and I just think it'd be hard for, for a corporately owned store or entity to, to make that case.
I'd like to, to ask you to make locally owned a higher priority. Um, just myself. So other commissioners can speak to that. Um, what about our businesses that have already laid employees off? I know the hire program, I think, didn't, uh, was for employers that had not laid their employees off or have planned to continue them for a period of time. Did I read that right?
I don't, I don't recall if that was.
Darren, yeah.
I don't believe that was part of it. I, I just personally, having, having talked to and worked with some of the folks that, that, um, received those funds, I, I don't believe that that was the case. There are some, there are some, um, requirements with the, the new CARES Act loan, the PPP loan, um, whereby June 30th, you have to be, either have, either have retained, uh, your payroll at the, at the previous level or gotten back to that level, uh, at that point, um, as compared to a, a time here prior to the disaster. to that level, uh, at that point, um, as compared to a, a time here prior to the disaster. Uh, and there, and there's some specific language there too, about not punishing businesses that had to lay people off from the beginning of the disaster to a time, um, X number of weeks after, or a month after the, after the, uh, CARES Act was, was passed and implemented. So, um, again, like we're looking in the, those, those federal, um, those federal relief packages are looking to a point in the future, um, where you have to be back to those pre-disaster levels.
Commissioner Morris, I'm gonna just, as an example, uh, we have a restaurant who cannot, can no longer serve in their dining room and they're, they're all carryout and they're all delivery. If it's a, I mean, it's a locally owned restaurant and they may be faced with a real challenge, well, they're not going to have all the employees they had two months ago just because they don't have their dining room open.
That was just, that was more of an I wonder question.
Yeah. No, that's, I think that's the explanation of why the hire program probably didn't have any requirement because it just would have been impractical.
And I think what the deal on that PPP, the payroll protection thing was, it was forgivable if you didn't lay anybody off. If you ended up laying someone off, then it would turn into kind of a, a loan that you had to repay. That was what you're, you heard or read.
That's what I'm remembering.
But you do have fun to rehire. You can rehire.
Rehire, yeah.
So, I had another question on, uh, the agreement. It's item two on page one. And it says $10,000 for a business ineligible for the Kansas Hire Program or any other federal program. And I wondered about adding or denied because the money, uh, denied because the money for federal or state programs had run out. Uh, I can see someone being denied because they don't, you know, it's not a good idea. But if those, look at all those businesses that have been denied funding. I hope that they would be eligible for, uh, some money through this program.
I think that's a great point. I think that was our intention, but you're right to say it that way.
Okay.
Um, I do think that we wrote this before the, the, uh, the PPP came out.
Sure.
They have done a great job in that bill of including everybody. And so I would find it, uh, again, I would find it pretty strange if we couldn't get somebody qualified under that, under the PPP.
And I think, uh, there's a major typo in, uh, uh, page two of the agreement that says, and the quote, I'm going to use is, that if the chamber still has proceeds of the loan on hand as of December 31st, 2010. So that would need to be changed.
We caught that, we caught that.
Okay. But I'm, I'm wondering about why not an, an earlier date even than December 31st?
That, that would be, that's, that's up to you all. I, I think at the end of the day, we're, we want to get it out and help people. Um, and if, if we don't use it all, we're going to give it right back. So...
Well, I think like the hire program was over, I mean, it was, had it used its money in a very short period of time. I can see this money going really fast also. Um, let's see. I wondered about legal action too. I'd like, before you pursue legal action to collect, I, I'd like for, because the city's going to be paying for the legal expenses, I'd like for you to consult with the city or whoever, uh, whoever in the city manager's office or the member of your committee before we had a big legal bill. I wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, that would obviously be, um, again, that was, uh, that was what was sent to us by the city.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have any comments on that, but, but that would be, uh, our intention.
I do have just one more and then I'll quit. And that is, I'm having trouble, uh, trying to quantify what primary employers means. And I know that they export 75% of the product out of Manhattan. But is that a Manco or a GTM or an Off Florence or how do we, uh, how is $20,000 going to matter to those large, uh, companies?
It, it probably wouldn't to those large companies, but there might be, I can't, I can't think of any off the top of my head, but there might be a small company that makes some kind of food product and they sell it all across the country. Or it might be, um, uh, there's, you know, we have, we have a few smaller manufacturers and a few smaller, uh, lab operators and, and people who, who we consider to be primary employers or base employers, who, whose impact on the community is much greater and who if go away, it's much harder to get to come back. So if you, if you lose retailers, in theory, the retail, the expenditures will still be there and you hope somebody's there to collect them. If you lose a, a primary employer, there's no guarantee that you'll get that, that business or replacement business back. And so that, I think it's targeted more to small than medium. I don't know that we'll get any takers on that, but, um, but the, but the needs because of, for a variety of reasons, the needs for primary employers sometimes are significantly larger. So...
And there was also a mention, uh, there's a difference in the language of the flyer versus the agreement with regard to, uh, the 5,000 and the $10,000 categories being available to, uh, private comma nonprofit organizations. And the agreement doesn't have those words in it.
It doesn't have nonprofit in it.
Uh, yeah. And those words are on the flyer. They are not...
We recommended private nonprofits too.
Yeah, okay. I'm just saying, there's a little difference there. I'm, and that's all I have.
We're open to that.
Yeah.
I mean, again, let's, let's, I think understand, it is not a blanket $5,000 loan. It is a, if, you know, if someone is about to go out of business for some particular expense, we want to help them with that expense.
I can see every, every nonprofit in town will come forward for that.
Private nonprofits are also eligible for a payroll protection program too. So...
And for economic injury disaster loans.
We'll help them get into those programs as well. We're happy to help. That's, that's the, that's our goal. Part of the goal of this is to identify those companies that may be struggling so we can get them into some of the larger programs because they may not even know they're out there. They may just think, what am I going to do? And especially the, uh, the small entrepreneurial, um, work from home people. And, and we want to show them there are opportunities that you can get that far exceed what we're able to do with this program and, and will help you create at least temporarily a, a longer term sustainability strategy.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for Jason. If, um, are we expecting to get the money back when the federal money, if they get accepted into the federal program, get paid back then out of the federal proceeds? Or you just figure over the next few months as business stays in business, they will repay you guys?
Yeah. Uh, you're asking Jason Smith?
Yeah.
The, um, I think our, we left it open. I mean, obviously our preference would be if they get federal money to just put this as a line item and pay it back. But, um, we also have set it up where they could pay it out over time. Because again, this, the federal money isn't revenue replacement, it is, it's an expense replacement. And so by allowing them to pay it off, you give them more flexibility to maybe survive when otherwise they might not.
Okay. My next question is, is, um, I didn't, I don't have my memo pulled up on the, on the computer here. Um, so as, if there's defaults and such like that, uh, someone alluded to that, um, is the chamber pay the city back or is the city in charge of trying to collect it or is it just gone?
We will, we will pursue collection per the agreement. And, um, the city has agreed to help us fund that to whatever degree because we're not getting any extra money. We're just getting the money that we're putting out. Um, and, and the city has the, the agreement states that this, that if we pursue all the necessary legal obligations and is deemed uncollectible, that we would be forgiven that back to the city. That's how the agreement's written.
Yeah. And, and I suspect there's going to be some of that because you can't take away a bunch of income for two or three months because you just can't cut expenses fast enough other than laying people off. But there's, yeah, the income replacement part is really going to be the issue because you just, we can't, there aren't enough government programs to replace people's income or business income without getting people back to work or businesses back open doing their thing. And so I know that the economic development funds over the last 25 years from Meadow Fab to, to time forward, if we didn't get a lot, if we didn't hardly get any of it back, it still would have been a better investment than a lot of the previous ones that the smartest people in town thought were going to be good investments. So I'm emotionally expecting a couple hundred thousand of it or more to probably go uncollected simply because there's, there's nothing in, in any of these federal, state or other bills to really make up for the fact that there've been no income to those businesses for a couple of months.
Yeah, it's painful. And that's what we're hearing. And, um, I wish I had a solution. I don't, but, but if we can help, this is what we are trying to do.
Yeah, we need to do something.
When, Aaron, do you have comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I'm, I'm in favor of it. I, I sent information to Ron, you know, early on when we were talking about this. And I thought we needed to do something. And the idea is to, you know, I like the idea here of a bridge. Sure, the chamber can have to make some tough calls. I think they're equipped to do it. I, I, I think, you know, common sense is in order here. Like if, if somebody applied for the hire, they were eligible and they got denied, then that clearly ought to make them eligible for this. And the concept here is, as was stated, it's, it's bridge. We've, we've got to take our economic development money and save as many of our local businesses as we can. So they're ready to reopen a couple of months from now or whenever it is. And we've got to give that a shot. And, and, you know, taking 500,000 and doing that initially is, is a good bet. Could we use more? Maybe, and that can be revisited. But the mechanism for doing it, it's going to be just almost impossible, I think. And, and, and two, uh, the city can't execute it. And I think that, that the chamber is better, better prepared to do it. And by doing this as a loan, I believe it'll work. I, I understand the idea of, you know, corporate people, you know, maybe we want to favor local business over them. But on the other side of the coin, remember who collected that economic development tax? It was every business in town and the city limits. And so it's got to be fair. But again, there's going to be some priority and judgment calls. And, uh, like my dad used to always say, you know, you got to put some common sense in it. And I'm hearing that from the chamber from the standpoint of what the intent is. So, so I hope that, you know, some bureaucratic, you know, punctuation or misspelling is not going to get you away from the intent. So, so I'm happy with what we see there. I don't want to complicate it by getting into details. Uh, I, I trust the intent of it. That was a, an army thing years ago where we always said, hey, what's the commander's intent? And don't worry about all the details in here because we're going to do the commander's intent. And that's my charge to the chamber. I think, you know, execute your content and I'll be, I'll be happy. So I'm 100% for it.
Aaron?
I have a couple of questions. Um, the, for Jason Smith, the window to apply, is that outlined anywhere? Or did, um, would you mind, uh, showing that or telling us if that's, what the thinking was behind that? Do we have a, have a window? Because that goes into the question that Commissioner Morris had brought up about having an end date, um, for when we perhaps would receive the money back if it's not all used? Or what I'm thinking, uh, is, uh, we want to meet those needs. This is a bridge, not an open-ended, uh, opportunity. So if that bridge is an emergency now between this period of time and when the federal loans can come in and help, which are much more effective probably, um, why don't we do that? Uh, why don't, what, why is the, what is that window there? And why don't we, uh, shorten that window a little bit, um, in a way that is meaningful? So then we can also explore how quickly this runs out. And as Commissioner Win or Butler just, uh, mentioned, um, maybe this is, uh, maybe there is another round opportunity to target more specific. We, we're going to learn as we go. You, you talked about it yourself. Um, this is new. Uh, we, we might not hit it right, uh, hit the sweet spot right on, on this go, but there might be some, some things that get through the cracks that really need to be addressed, uh, on another round later. That could be a lower amount, uh, could be something different. But where is that window?
So I think our intent was for just to be open. Um, and, and, you know, when we say to bridge to the federal program and Darren talked about, you know, we're still waiting to get that process started. I think, I think there's also going to be people and businesses and these will be smaller. Um, you know, I, I pulled the numbers for the mayor the other day. We, we have roughly 4,000 businesses in Manhattan who have no employees. So, um, you know, these are, these are folks who don't usually show up on a lot of radars, who may or may not be plugged in as, as much as some of the other ones. And so, you know, they may get two, three weeks down the line and, uh, find out about it, find out about this program then, and then call us and say, hey, I need help. And then they've never heard, you know, I know that's unlikely, but you never know. So I think our goal was to leave it open until we either ran out of money or the need dissipated. Um, but, but we're not, we're not, that's not something that, that is set in stone. It's certainly if you guys wanted to do it as a test and come back and reevaluate it, we, we would be happy to, to do that as well.
I, I just had kind of an August timeline in my, in my head to get us through the summer. So then we can see if there needs to be other things addressed. But December 31st, uh, and then a two-week turnaround, it looks like to, um, try to get that, uh, back to us if there's anything left. Um, other questions were somewhat answered in how we define a Manhattan area business. Uh, I think that has been addressed pretty well. But, uh, I think this is an opportunity we need to, we need to do. I know it's a drop in the bucket for some people, but it could be a lifeline to others. And, uh, what is the risk involved on our part? If, I, I don't want to be as pessimistic as Commissioner Hattasol and say that, uh, we won't recoup, uh, the several hundred thousand. I think the, the community will hopefully get us back, uh, in whole on this. And we should do our part to offer this opportunity. In that sense, in the letter that you sent to us, uh, Jason Smith, you talk about resources that the chamber can provide. And, and when you talk about resources, you're meaning, uh, staff or are you talking about, uh, financial resources?
Yeah. So right now it's, it's, it's staff. We, we are, we've committed four full-time people. That doesn't include me. Four full-time people to providing assistance to our, and, and this is a regional. So we're, we're working with companies in Potawatomi County, Wamigo area. Um, we're trying to be as regional as we can there. Um, and then, um, Brenda, our office manager, myself and, and the other staff will manage to fund and make sure all the, the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And so, uh, it's just, it's just with staff and personnel and time. And so, um, we're not, we're not billing for any administrative costs or anything like that. We're doing it all. We're, we're absorbing all that ourselves.
Well, and I, I definitely appreciate that. And I think we all know the road, uh, what is, what, there's that saying about the road, uh, are, is paved with good intentions. Um, and so we need to also, I think, just be a little, we have to be more transparent than maybe, uh, we would like to in an emergency in the sense that the perception of, of who is being favored, that process, what is, uh, if, can you speak to how the different business entities, the different, uh, business associations even, uh, downtown Aggieville, West Loop, those are all kind of going to be balanced in how this is dulled out and how applications are approved?
I, I mean, again, I think we're going to try to be as neutral as possible and just evaluate it based on the criteria. And the criteria will be, do you have an expense that's, that is, that we believe will inhibit your ability to survive long-term? Is that a need that's a short-term need and it can't be, um, addressed using some other program? Um, and that you're in the city limits. So, you know, I think is, we're going to try our best to just apply those, those core, uh, principles to everything and not get into a certain amount has to be for this quadrant or this area or this section, um, for a variety of reasons. We are working, Darren's working very closely with, with Gina and, uh, and, uh, the, I just went blank, the Dennis and, um, and the West Loop group. So, uh, they are aware of what we're doing and, and we've offered to help in any way that we can. So, uh, they are aware of what we're doing and, and we've offered to help in any way that we can with those, or, um, associations as well.
And maybe this is a question for, I, I'm not really sure, but who, the, the, the sales tax, economic development sales tax money was collected underneath the Riley County, uh, order. So a little bit ago, we were, right? Uh, I see, I see Commissioner Paul shaking his head. Uh, we, we, does this, how does this affect Pot County side within the city limits? Uh, are they, earlier we just said they were, they'd be eligible because it's city limit, but the dollars in this fund didn't come from that side correctly? Is that correct?
It is correct. We do have a balance in the existing Meadow Fab Fund that was put in place for both Riley and Potawatomi Counties within the city. So we can take some revenue from that fund and apply it here in the event they do get some applications from Potawatomi County.
Okay, that ends, thank you. Clarifies that.
Commissioner Esterberg also want to address, um, on the transparency. That's one of the reasons why we, I specifically asked Jason Hilders. We wanted a city staff person, somebody from the city manager's office on the loan committee. And, and then we're gonna make it clear to the applicants. Now their personal information won't be public and their financial information won't be public. But, but they will be, that, that they received this loan is a public matter. And so they, you know, they're, everybody will have to sign on. So everybody will see if we make a loan, we're gonna report it back to the city that this business received X amount and this is the repayment schedule. So.
Thank you. I'm, um, what I, real quick, I guess, we have public comments to still read as well. And I know there's other comments, but I, uh, wanted to thank you. I know there was a period of time where there was uncertainties and I want to thank the, uh, people that kind of get the, got this proposal in front of us quickly. Um, so I appreciate that and appreciate the, the work with the, I think we'll hear the comments later. It's a little odd to have read the comments and knowing that they're coming. So I'll just wait.
The, um, I might also ask, uh, Lorie, who's representing our leadership team. Cause without their approval to allocate our personnel resources, we wouldn't be able to do this. So Lorie, if you want to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and, and all the city staff. Uh, thank you to the city staff, Jason Smith and Darren for all their hard work that they've put into this. I think it's so important and the chamber leadership, as Jason commented, um, we've of course met several times pertaining to this. And we are so, so grateful that they're working on this. But also we believe this is a great use of these, um, economic development funds. And because of everything that we've talked about, you know, we want to be helping all these businesses. And this is a great way to bridge into, um, you know, what we're trying to do versus those other federal and state programs. So the chamber leadership is very excited about this program. We thank all of you for all your work. And we, and I personally have been receiving phone calls about people excited that this is, um, being looked at and like the fact that the city and the chamber are working together with the use of economic development funds to assist them.
Thank you, Lorie. Um, so I have a few comments and questions as well. Uh, I've talked to, um, Jason Smith, I've talked to Ron, I've talked to several of our businesses. I'm sure, uh, most of the commissioners have also. So this is just one piece of the puzzle for this COVID-19 crisis. Uh, the business sector is one, the emotional turmoil is huge. Uh, there's still a lot of homeless and all of the social services impact. And God forbid, if you get the, uh, you know, this virus, um, the entire family is impacted because, um, it's extremely painful. One of the things I really hated doing during this crisis is asking people not to go to restaurants, not to go shopping, not to go to businesses, stay at home, stay at home, stay at home. And, um, but that's the only solution, not even a solution. That was the only one we, we had any control over because there isn't any, uh, medicine or vaccinations or anything of that sort, just to reduce the spread of the virus. But with that being said, I know we're going to be vibrant once again. I think the federal, um, agencies are doing all they can with the 2 point some odd trillion dollars. And hopefully there'll be more coming from what I'm hearing the conversations going. And hopefully that'll help out our business sector as well. Uh, on the state level, the higher money went really fast. And the, um, Department of Labor is getting over 200,000 calls a day, uh, to man, just for unemployment, uh, for people that had to shut down for many reasons. And the other piece was some of them felt they had to shut down so they are eligible for some of those funds or some of those loans or whatever it is. There's a certain criteria that they need to meet. And being shut down or having a declared emergency are some of those steps to be eligible for some of those funds. But the money ran out so quickly and I think that's going to be the same case locally. I think once we get that word out, whether it's with the Mercury or Cayman or however you do it, that money's going to be gone within 48 hours. Uh, you're going to have so many applications in front of you. So I'm glad you have some staff that's gonna look through those, but that's how great the need is. Uh, the 400, um, employees or employers you've talked about, and then there's so many more. So many people that just have even less than five employees. Some of them are just home-run businesses. Some of them are just startups and then you have the bigger ones. But I do want to talk about equity in this process, that one, they do not have to be a chamber member. So even though the chamber is the one who's going to be, uh, working with the city, you do not have to be a chamber member and that needs to be very clear. Uh, the other piece is, I don't know how you're going to do it as, um, 5, 10, 20,000, whatever that tiered system is. Um, I'm thinking it's first come, first served. But at the same time, we don't want the ones that have, uh, people in the know to get all of the money in first. There are a lot of people that are still in their little filos and are just struggling because they couldn't, they weren't eligible for anything else. And they may not even know we're having this discussion this evening. So I want to make sure it's equitable for everybody that's out there. And how do you do that outreach? I'm not sure. But it needs to have that boundary of chamber and non-chamber, small, medium and large. How do you, how do you define a small business? What, what is your definition of a small business?
Is that a question for us?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, um, so, I mean, the definition per SBA Darren is 500, right? That, now that's not the definition of small business in Manhattan. Um, so I, I would, I would not want to try to answer that question because I, I guarantee you there, there is a, there are employers who have less than 25 people who considers themselves small business. Someone with one employee thinks 25 is huge.
Right.
But I prefer not to answer that just because I, I don't want to make that value judgment for somebody else. But, um, for purposes of this program, we did not allocate any more for a small than a large. But we made the number, the, the, the amount such that we don't believe it will be something that a lot, it will be hard for a large company to come in and prove that something under $5,000 will keep them open.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to be clear because that's what I hear is like it's in the hundreds for small business. But when we are talking local, and I do want most of these funds, a great majority of them, if not all of them, to go to our local businesses. Uh, those are the ones that are going to have this bridge, that are going to need this bridge for a month or two. And if we're talking about four months, and that's where they're giving the unemployment funds for four months for $600 extra per week, uh, so they are seeing long-term. But I think, um, I want to see some equity in how these funds are dispersed. I want it to be as least restrictive as possible, but, but filling the need for those people that were not eligible for other funds in the interim. Um, and, and that's, that's the depression that's going on in our communities right now. Um, the other piece to that is most of the ones that let go of their employees, I don't know if they also had to let go of the insurance when they left. Does insurance follow an unemployed person or is it gone when they're unemployed? Any one of you can answer that. I don't know the answer to that question.
I, I, I think that's a decision that's up to the individual employer. So I think an employer can continue to pay the health premiums for employees if they're in a layoff or, or position, but they don't have to. They do have to offer Cobra, um, which, as you know, is really expensive and most people can't afford it. But I don't think there's a rule one way or the other.
Okay. Cause that, that's the other piece the unemployed are facing right now is that, um, healthcare insurance that they have to take care of. Um, so all the businesses that I've spoken to are, are devastated. And whatever we can do to help would, would be, um, I think that it falls on us since they're the ones who make up our community and make it thriving and vibrant and make Manhattan what it is. Uh, we are talking about 500,000 this evening, but I don't mind expanding that to see once, you know, how quickly it goes and the needs in our community. Again, this won't, uh, take care of all of their needs, but hopefully they'll have resources to move on and sustain themselves, uh, as they, as they move forward with the other steps. So when they come and apply, would you also provide them resources to other things they might be eligible for? Or is it here, just file your application online and you're good to go?
No, that, that is the actual goal is how do we get those businesses into other programs? So, um, we, we, again, we specifically ask on the application, what have you applied for? And, um, if they haven't, we are going to require that they do. So, because every business, we think qualifies at minimum for the PPP program.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, that's something we've found as, as, again, economic development staff and membership staff have been doing outreach and calling. And again, I'm, I'm talking about a sample size includes chamber member businesses, but calling member businesses that there's a large number of them that at this point are looking for that information. Um, and, and so that outreach, this is just going to be another touch point with them. And, and you're talking about folks and this program is specific to Manhattan, but, but there are, uh, we have, we have, we are seeing a need from, from member businesses across the region and understanding that the need for education, the need for one-on-one engagements with somebody to walk them through that process is vitally important. And I just echo what Jason and Lorie said as far as, um, the, the, um, chamber leadership giving us the ability as, as staff to go out and provide that service and do that, I think is ultimately going to be incredibly impactful through this. Um, and it's going to get a lot of people into the funnel a lot quicker, uh, for, for what options they have.
So how are you going to get this information out to other folks that may not be chamber members?
Um, I think we're going to rely on all the traditional media, all the new media, um, word of mouth. Um, hopefully you all will talk to your constituents. Um, you know, it's, it's just gonna take word of mouth. It's gonna take, uh, the, this community getting this information out. And again, I can't stress this enough, there are program, aside from this program, there are programs available to help and we can help you get connected to those programs. So give us a call and, and, uh, let us try to help do that. But we are, any method to get information to people, we're gonna try.
Your city newsletter that goes out would be an excellent source, of course, besides our newsletter and the newspaper and the radio stations and social media. But I can't imagine that there'll be hardly anyone missed from, from all of those.
Right. I think the Mercury and Cayman would be wonderful to get on there as soon as possible and let, let the public know about what's going on. I, I would like to see if certain requirements are met, um, by, by a certain business, that there is potential for forgiveness at some point. Because what we're talking about is loans from so many sectors for a problem they didn't create. Um, none of them wanted to be in this position. And if we, this is, the Economic Development Fund is taxpayer money. And we often use that money to recruit and retain corporations or bigger businesses. But if we don't have a vibrant local economy, we will not survive in Manhattan. So there should be a path to if they meet certain criteria, that there is a, a chance for, uh, for part of that being a forgivable loan, if not all at some point. Because if you're talking about an organization that needs $5,000, I can't imagine all of the other needs that they probably have. Uh, uh, so I think that's some, a path that we need to sustain because they're all in survival mode right now and sustain them for the next three or four months and give them an option to do something different. Um, let me see what other, uh, questions I had. Um, did you say this would take, uh, if we approve it this evening, it would take two weeks? Is that what I heard? Is that how soon you wanted to get it up and going?
I hope not. I hope we can do it faster than that. Jason would, Jason Hilders, what do you?
Yeah, from our end, it's just really a matter of executing the agreement and then working through the committee that, um, Jason and Darren talked about with board members and some city staff. So from a revenue and, and cash perspective, uh, there really doesn't need to be much delay with the approval of the action tonight.
And with nonprofits, uh, you know, we have the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation. Uh, I would like for them to be directed that way first before we think of, uh, giving, thinking of them as a business. I think nonprofits are just as important. But the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation also has, um, a, a different avenue for some of those monies and see if we can utilize some of those as well. I think what the MHK, uh, Together did is extraordinary by, uh, getting out over 190,000, maybe 175,000 dollars and helping out. So there's an initiative that just took off. And I think that's what this community is built on. And I think the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, the partnership they had with them was a good one. And that's something, you know, maybe we can work with on these funds as well.
So my understanding is the agreement that you're looking at tonight would not include nonprofits and so.
Right. It didn't have it in the agreement, but it had it in the, um, text.
So I think we would, we would defer to the agreement.
Okay. Then, yeah, it needs to be revised a little bit. Other than that, I, like I said, I'm all about equity and making sure our small businesses' needs are met. And when I think small, I'm thinking your pop, you know, your shops that are like five people, 10 people, employees that just need to have a little bit of leverage to move forward. Um, and bridging that gap. So I, I would love to see this happen as soon as possible and get it out to everybody, uh, non-chamber members, just as well as the chamber members.
Linda Mars again. How do we handle the businesses that have already closed because of the governor's, uh, executive order?
So I think they would be eligible to apply. They would, they would again need to show that they had an expense that was an immediate expense.
Okay.
That we were trying to get them into other funding and that it would be something that would cause them to continue to be open once this is all over.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
I, just a couple of comments and, and I appreciate the mayor's comments. I would love it. We can make all these loans forgivable. I, I, I'm, I hear from the same businesses that you do. The challenge that you have with that is that you have a business maybe that doesn't really, that has other options, but if they see that they can get it as a grant, they'll, they'll come get this first. Um, and, or you may see a business who doesn't necessarily need it, but they see their competitor got it and they think, well, I better go get it too. And we will run out, you, you know, you, you're right. We may run out in two, three days. But if, but if it's forgivable, we'll run out in 30 minutes.
Right. I'm not saying make it forgivable right away. I think there needs to be a thought to how to get to some of them. I understand. I don't want to make it all grants and all of that. If I, I wish I was a rich woman, so I can do that. You know, help them out a little bit. But at the same time, some of these, uh, organizations, um, they've tried so many paths and this is that bridge forward. That, that, that's what we're looking for. Uh, that bridge to connect. So if they've met some of that criteria, maybe, you know, there is, because I think some of the federal ones are also looking at some kind of a forgivable and to some of them. Not 100%, but a certain portion. And maybe that's something we can think about.
The relief package is pretty, I mean, you, you, there's a, there's a path to where that's all forgivable, I believe, right? Darren, the PPP program?
You could structure that in a way that it is, yes. Um, you can borrow up to two and a half months average, average payroll. And then if, um, uh, up to that amount, you know, no more than the principal, but up to that amount could be forgiven on the backend depending, that's going to be dependent on, upon your business's expense structure.
Right.
And then there's a $10,000 grant in the disaster loan as well. So I, I'm, I'm with you. I wish, I wish we had all the money in the world that we could, that we could do just, but we just don't. Um, so I just think we have to be careful in how we phrase those things.
I agree. And this is zero interest?
We patterned the repayment after the hire program. So we copied it. The four-month deferral, uh, three years, zero interest repayment.
Okay. Okay. That's more palatable. And like Mark was, uh, you know, alluding to, um, this is just paying regular expenses. This is not even a profit margin or any revenue sources or anything. This is just going from one month to another, just kind of skipping along. Uh, so, yeah. So we'll see what the other ones, um, pulled out for. But yeah, let's get it up and going as soon as possible. So yeah, so we'll see what the other ones pulled out for. But yeah, let's get it up and going as soon as possible. So there's some, some optimism or some, you know, getting out a light at the end of the tunnel. Let's see. Any other questions or comments for Jason, Darren, or Lori, or Jason Hilders?
I, I just briefly wanted to say welcome aboard, Darren. Couldn't have come at a better time, right?
We think the same thing.
Honestly, I'll echo that comment.
Right, right time. So let's go on to public comment. And let's see what the public had to say. Some of them are long, but if they were speaking, it would be under five minutes. So we will, we will take public comment.
Thanks, Mayor. This is Jared Wassinger. Again, we received four public comments submitted online for general agenda item B. The first one is from Dave Lewis Guthel's. Address 1907 Gardena Terrace, Manhattan, Kansas. Public comment reads, "I fully support this measure. There are so many businesses that are struggling right now, including mine. I've already lost three months of income and I may lose more. I don't know that any one business is immune from this situation. These monies could potentially keep a large share of struggling businesses afloat. And if the funds are not applied soon, we could lose a majority of the small businesses in the community. That would be a tragedy and a dereliction of your duties." The second public comment is from Kristen Brighton. Address 3917 Golden Eagle Drive, Manhattan, Kansas. It reads, "I'm writing to urge the city commission to approve the chamber's proposal to create an interest-free small business loan program out of existing city economic development funds. As a small business owner in a professional service industry, the immediate impact of this pandemic won't be felt for some of us for a few months. Our business already had contracts in place that have kept our employees working from home during this time. However, looking ahead a month or two, we are anticipating a significant slowdown. There is too much uncertainty right now and too many clients are having to slow down or pause projects because they are dealing with the impacts of the epidemic. New projects are being delayed or put on hold as everyone adjusts to this new reality. Like so many others, our business is pursuing SBA loan options, but the federal process is extremely complicated. Federal websites are crashing, terms are changing daily, and the amount of information required is stunning. Handling this locally seems like a good way for our community to reinvest in itself during this time. The impact on small businesses will translate to great losses in sales tax jobs and other revenues for the city. It will also slow down or stop progress toward greater initiatives to ensure our community's economic future. This seems like a proactive way for the city and chambers to help local businesses that are the backbone of this community. Please approve this plan so the chamber can get to work helping our small businesses, bridge this troubled time, and so we can all get back to focusing on building a stronger tomorrow for our Greater Manhattan region." The third public comment was submitted by Kirsten Harris. Address 601 Fremont Street, Manhattan, Kansas. "We closed the chef on March 17th due to COVID-19. Any assistance to help keep the businesses in good standing during this hopefully temporary hiatus would be much appreciated." And the fourth and final public comment submitted was from John Alu Johnstone. Address 300 North Fourth Street, Apartment 324, Manhattan, Kansas. The comment reads, "No doubt these times call for leadership and swift action. In this context though, we must still represent our best values and protect the most vulnerable residents. In this light, as the city commission considers the proposal for the Chamber of Commerce, we urge the commission to help businesses prioritize the needs of those who contribute to our community as working employees. The city must clearly emphasize the need to preserve jobs of workers and to maintain and improve the wages wherever possible. Therefore, we would like to see strong wording that economic development funds be used for maintaining employees on business payrolls and securing their wages and benefits. It should also be clear that the chamber will be fully responsible for repayment of economic development funds without forgiveness. Manhattan Alliance for Peace and Justice Living Wage Group led by Larry Davis, Ann Cohen, Kathy Swenson, John Exdale, and Reverend John Alu Johnstone." And that's it.
Okay. I have a couple also from, I have one from Aggieville. I think I'm going to read this because some of them may not be familiar with going online and doing it with the link we had. So Dennis Cook, Aggieville Director of Aggieville Business, said, "Good afternoon, commissioners and city manager. I appreciate your concerns about the city in general and Aggieville in particular. Over the past few days, we had more than one city commissioner reach out and ask about how we're doing and one county commissioner. That means a lot. I wish I had the information that would tell us the tax dollar implications of this shutdown, but I can share some numbers with you. Aggieville is today home of 96 businesses. We have a few vacancies, but none have closed yet due to this event. We hope our economic, we hope your economic help and support and quick recovery. We know that some of the damage is done and we can't get, we can't go back." And he named off a few numbers by category of businesses. Food, eating and dining, there are 33 in this group. 14 are completely closed and 19 have led to alter, ulterior, alter their business model. Best guess is they have laid off 420 employees. Service, which is salons, computers, and hotels. There are 31 in this group. 20 are closed and 11 have altered their business. Estimated number of laid-off employees is 160. Bars, 20 bars and 17 have closed completely. The other three have some food-to-go options. Loss of employees is approximately 250. Shops such as clothing. We have 13 shops in this group. Seven closed and six altered loss, altered business model. Loss of 50 employees. Total, this adds up to approximately 880 employees laid off. 48 businesses closed. 53 businesses that are adjusting with business model, with a different business model, but doing considerably less business. An even scarier thought is about 75% of the 880 employees are not even in town. Can't even earn any money here, so they can't spend any money here. City commissioners and city staff, we need some help and relief thanks to you and to the chamber for what you do." And there's one from Gina Scroggs from downtown. "In front of tonight's discussion, I have some thoughts to share. It is not impossible to think that some businesses could be denied emergency funds. Last week, the state's Higher Hospitality Industry Relief Emergency Fund ran dry. Downtown had several businesses qualify for the higher loan, but they did not receive relief. I need clarification on the 10,000 loan going to who? Who were ineligible for the higher grant? And what about the ones that were eligible? Where did that money go? Where did that money get? All across Manhattan, there are entire industries forced to close in a series of waves. The governor's March 17th order of 2004 to prevent mass gatherings of 50 or more people impacted our hotels and smaller hospitality or entertainment venues like Manhattan Axe Throwing, Finn's Pub, and Waram Opera House, to name only a few. Shortly thereafter, the businesses in close contact industries such as salons, gyms, fitness centers, yoga studios, tattoo shops, barber shops, massage therapy, nail salons, and dance studios were first forced to close on March 21st under the county order. All of the above small businesses have been particularly hard hit because of the most, because of the most part, they cannot continue for even a meager income through online sales or curbside delivery. It goes without saying that our traditional retailers are cracking under the weight of overhead expenses, most of which have increased exponentially in the downtown district. I am in no way implying or suggesting that there should be priority over other types of businesses that get emergency assistance. What I am saying is that the qualification criteria and the process needs to be specifically outlined so that every type of small business that needs the bridge funding will get it. The number of small businesses in Manhattan is easily double than the sample graph in the agenda memo. Please do not take my statements as lack of gratitude. I am tremendously impressed and thankful for the quick thinking actions of all the leadership involved in the process to provide economic relief. While I believe we must be swift with this rescue, we have to be smart as well. It is highly likely that the chamber and city staff leadership have already thought through these processes and will discuss them tonight. Also grateful for that. Thank you again for giving, giving this note your attention. Be well, Gina." So those are from our business directors. So the need is heavy and chamber has a big task in front of them as well as the city. And let's do all we can to get back where we at least sustain ourselves for the time being. Any other comments?
Those letters, you know, Dennis and Gina, I think, sent out to everybody on the commission, I believe. I got the same one, so.
Right. I just want to read it out to the public, that's all.
Well, that's excellent. I'm glad you read them because they needed to be read.
Yeah.
And I, I'll just chime in as a, um, this, the number of unemployed and the number of, just the, the, the numbers are massive, right? This is a, the huge, huge mountain of a problem. But at the same time, we're really, really soon, we're at the early end of it, right? So we don't know actually how big it is, but the trend looks horribly difficult to overcome. So I don't know that we're in a position to make anything certain, but I think the people and the business owners, the employees need to know that we want to have their back as much as possible. The problem that we are facing is, you know, this is a drop in the bucket, right? This is not going to solve that mountain of a problem that's coming, but it might get us to a point a little bit farther. And that's what everybody's talked about, the bridge, getting us to those federal assistance, all of that. Just want to reiterate it. I, I think we, the letters say it better, but the mountain of evidence is there that this is, this is needed. So I'll, I'll be supportive. And I think we also have to do our best to get this out there because I think maybe there's 34 people watching on Facebook. Maybe two of those are Jared and Jason. I don't know. So the, the business owners aren't going to know unless we really try to get it to them. And maybe they're, maybe they're looking for it, maybe they're not, maybe it's on them. But since this is such a small need, we, we need to hit the, the areas as hard as we can that, that need the resources. So please don't count on Facebook to get the information out there.
No, I think, I think that's good. I think going on the radio as soon as possible, getting everything out there. I don't think this is going to last very long, last very long in the sense the applications are going to come pouring in. So you're going to have a daunting task. But at the same time, I also want to keep us, keep track of who wasn't eligible and why. Because they also probably need something on the other end to see how we can do that. So I would like to keep as much data as possible. I remember David Tolan this afternoon saying, "If you applied for the higher grant and you weren't, and you, you're next in line because it's first come, first served, but continue to apply because we need that information. We need that data. That's the only way we will know the impact. We need those numbers. So we ourselves, if we need to apply for other federal or state funds, we will have those numbers in front of us. So we want to encourage everybody who thinks there's a possibility to apply." And I see your hand, Linda, just a second. So I feel like this is something we, we must do and the number are, the numbers are going to get larger. And this is one piece of that puzzle because the other piece is all the people that are unemployed. And that's where, you know, the Department of Labor is trying to figure out, they're getting 200,000, you know, like I said, calls and staffing like no, no tomorrow. Two, 3.3 million people, you know, on unemployment. So our numbers are going to skyrocket. So those, that's the other piece of the puzzle we need to figure back on how to get them back into knowing there's some job security at the end of the two or three months or five or six months, whatever that might be. And then there's a lot of homeless people and a lot of shelter people and a lot of people that need food. So all of these other resources that this city, city commission needs to still discuss. Linda, did you want to say something?
Yes, I just wanted to say how pleased I am that we're able to offer this program as a city and pleased that we have the economic development money and we're able to use it in this way at a time that's critical. And, and we may have, like you suggested, Usha, we may have to address this again. It may not be over. I don't know what August and September are going to look like. But this is a, just something that we are so fortunate to be able to do. And so I, I, I want it to work out and I just would not like for there to be a lot of controversy or dissension about the program. I'd like to have it be very open and, and fair, as you suggested, equitable and make it work well so that if we wanted to renew it, we would have the community's support to do that. Thank you.
I don't mind volunteering at the chamber to look through the applications, but I don't know if I'm the best person for that. But I think you're going to get a lot of them. Do we make a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion and call the question. I move that we approve the Chamber of Commerce request and authorize city administration to finalize the loan agreement and the mayor to execute.
Second.
Brenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Well, thank you, everyone. Great, great job this evening. This was a special meeting and we will have our regular meeting next week. Yes, Jason?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to have a little discussion about just, you know, how you think things went tonight relative to how we brought the meeting together. Can you hear me?
Uh, just barely.
So I wanted to just spend a little time while we're together, just kind of critiquing this process that we came on our first online meeting. Obviously, we have another one coming up a week from tonight. And so, you know, one of the things that we did that's a little bit, and again, it was done in the spirit of bringing public comment to the meeting as best we could. And that was the written comments that were submitted officially. And then there were some that weren't, that were read that weren't submitted officially, but certainly were communicated to you and that aspect of things. Obviously, we have open public comment scheduled for the next meeting, which I suspect there will be a lot. And I didn't know for sure how you wanted to handle that, whether you want to allocate time for that. I don't, that could be, you know, could be a half a dozen, it could be 600. I don't know. I mean, it's just some things to think about. And if you could give us some critiquing on how do you think, thought this process went?
Sure.
Ron, if I, just to clarify, the resolution tonight eliminated the open public comment in the future. The real-time live open public comment. That's what was adopted tonight.
Right.
I don't understand.
I didn't mean open public comment, but the, do you still, is the expectation if we get 200 written submitted comments, are we going to read all of those publicly in the meeting?
Right. So you said if, since our first meeting, we usually have public comment.
Right.
If they send them, are we going to read all of them? I think, you know, this is new to us, but we are also in a time when a lot of people have a lot to say. And I think if we get that many, I do think it's, it's on us to read it. That's how this process works. We are, we are at a time when the people, the people want a lot of information, a lot of communication, and they have a lot of concerns that that's the platform they would have originally used to come and speak in front of us. Right now, our, the way we do meetings has changed so dramatically that if they were going to come in front of us and have 200 people talk in front of us and instead they put it in emails, I believe that's what we should be doing is reading those emails. Everybody's in high stress right now. And I think they need to be acknowledged if they have a concern. And I believe that's the, this is their government and I want to keep it as open to that as possible. I understand it's a time factor for us, but once again, we have, you know, we are trying to reduce as many meetings as possible. Reading those comments would not be a burden for staff or anybody else for extra work. We would just be reading them.
The, the resolution tonight eliminated real-time live public comment during the meeting. It didn't specify, so. It didn't specify, so, so the application of it would be that there, that it's not delivered in any format. It, it didn't, it doesn't, it wasn't intended to just shift it from an individual participating to someone reading 200 comments, though. It's to eliminate any kind of live, real time um, distribution of the public comment to streamline the meeting. Yes, that's what the resolution did.
Right. So what I did today was not correct, would not, would, is it incompatible with the resolution we did as far as reading the comments?
Well, tonight, we did just adopt that resolution tonight. And so we had that process in place for this meeting where we were going to submit them and it was a decision of the commission to read them. That's not really incompatible. We just adopted that tonight. The plan would be that next week, we would do the same thing where we would solicit the written public comment um, through the website or other means and provide it to the commission. So the commission can have those comments, but it's not, we're not intending to add an item to the agenda where some staff member or someone else reads innumerable public comments. And, and bear in mind that in order for that to happen, the comments could come from anywhere in the world. It's not just individuals, you know, if you have live public comment in the building, you know, there's a natural limitation of people who have the time and transportation to come to your meeting to speak. If you accept them online, you could have people from anywhere submit public comments. And the other issue is the content of those comments could become not, they could be profane, they could have, they could not be what a staff member should be reading. And so we're asking them to censor those and that's not appropriate either. Whereas when they, when somebody is speaking in their faces at a public meeting, there may be more restraint from commenting in that way versus somebody can submit an online form, you don't know if it's the person who submitted it, you have no way to verify that because you're not seeing them and you're reading those comments. So there's, I think there's a, a host of problems. It's not that we don't want the comments, we do, but broadcasting them as part of the meeting is outside the scope of the resolution and creates some practical, logistical and other, other issues. Um, also, if you get two or 300, you can't pick and choose which ones, just someone's going to have to read them all, which undermines the purpose of the resolution, which is to streamline the meetings. It, only during this emergency period, emergency period, by the way. There would be the option for the city to post those pop comments if you would like the public to see them. So, to post them so someone could read them, you know, they could read them visually, not read them live at the meeting, but you could visually go to the website and anyone from the public could read those comments. That, that could be an option.
Okay. Well, that's not what I read into the resolution. Then we need to look at that again. So what you're saying is what I did tonight, when I say for a general agenda item one, and I said commissioner comments, and then I said, we usually say, are there any public comments? So what you're telling me is there wouldn't be, are there any public comments?
No. They're eliminated only from being part of the live public meeting. You could have solicited those in writing.
Right.
You could read those. You could publish those for the public to read. It's just, there's not going to be someone reading hundreds, potentially hundreds of comments for hours online, a staff member otherwise. We can distribute those another way, but the purpose of the resolution was to not have that be a part of the live, real time broadcast.
Well, one, I don't think we're going to get hundreds of them because the reason we are going with this type of resolution is we are going to try to keep the, as ones that need the most public input to a different time as much as possible. Uh, so for routine items, I think if we're going to say we're just going to post them on the website, the reason we are going out of our way to do as much as reading them out loud is because there are a lot of individuals that don't go to a website. Uh, that's why the reading came in, otherwise I don't have to read any one of these. But following our usual structure of, the live is not there anymore. We're just reading what they gave us. Um, but we're assuming a lot of negatives of the public, somehow it's all going to be nasty and we're going to get hundreds of them and all of that. But then they are no longer part of the process except for giving it to us and go to the website and check out what others said.
You also can't verify. Pardon me, Mary. You also can't verify that the person who submitted it is actually the person. And that's a real complication of it. It's not necessarily that someone's being nefarious, that someone could submit it in your name and there's no verification. And you'd be reading a comment from me and I, I never submitted that. But when I appear before you and I'm speaking, then you know who I am and you're seeing the person representing themselves at me. That's one of the problems with the virtual, with doing that is that you can't even verify that the comment you're reading is from the person, the name. You have no way to verify that.
Well, maybe we need to find a way to verify it because I feel like we just took the democratic process out. I, that's, I didn't realize that's what I'm signing up for when I went with the resolution.
Well, again, there's a difference between transparency and, and participation. And we're maintaining a high level of transparency here because we're allowing several ways for the public to view the meeting. We're also allowing them several ways to contact you so that you can take into account their comments as part of your decision. And any, an individual commissioner can say, I received this comment or that comment and influenced my thinking. I mean, you can provide, you know, that feedback to people who have contacted you when you're speaking. That's different than having some kind of item in which we're real time reading comments to the public. There's other ways to distribute that to the public, um, so that anyone can see those comments. And that, that's another mechanism we can have, but it, we're not, the transparency is maintained, absolutely. Um, and we can't, pardon? I'm sorry.
I don't think that's an accurate statement because so next week, when we get our regular agenda item, will it have public comment after the pledge of allegiance?
No, that was eliminated in the resolution tonight.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand then. That's, that's not what I was thinking because there are people that might be impacted that's going on, that has nothing to do with any of the things. Usually that one time in that one month is the time public can speak to issues that are of concern to them. Let's say they want to talk about, uh, you know, something that happened in their home and they want the city to do something about it, let's say, but it's not on our general agenda item. So now they're just going to email us and that's it. Even if other people may have that same concern, nobody will ever know. Oftentimes, when they come to a public meeting and voice their opinion, it's because that comment is also being viewed or heard by other people that may have that same concern. And if we.
But I, I think it does maintain the transparency, but I don't have a problem with, you know, public comments saying, okay, we posted 200 emails on the website. Fifty of them were concerned about secondhand smoke from fireplaces. Forty were about this, and just paraphrase it, because think about what can happen with social media. If we were to get 200 emails that were actually five minutes long, which is easy to do, people type in two, three pages, we'd spend 15 hours reading them. 15 hours. Our meeting would expire before then.
How many times have we had 15? I mean, I, that doesn't happen.
See that happening, but I also understand your concern. You want to get the word out. Well, if it's posted on there and commissioners have the ability to say, hey, I got three emails from these individuals, they all expressed the same thing. They were concerned about one, two, three. It's like an abstract on a PhD study and that's the way I see it. We should be able to do that and maintain the transparency. And if people want to see the exact wording of what somebody sent, we post it to the website. But I understood that fully when we voted on the resolution because we've, we've got to streamline this thing and it fits the definition of the, of the rules that we have there. It's transparent. It doesn't require participation. So I don't have a problem with it.
Uh, Linda Morse here. I uh, voted no on the proposal, uh, because I, I mean, this is just one of the reasons, but I don't fear the public. I welcome public input. And at the earliest possible moment, when this um, state of emergency and all these altered processes are um, out of the way, I want us to return to open public comments in, in our face-to-face meetings. And I would like to have a way, uh, when the public attends one of our meetings and makes a statement, it, that it is assumed that it will be made public on our, our broadcast, both uh, Facebook and TV. And so I'm, um, uh, I think we can readily make those available. Uh, I don't need for public comments to go through the city staff on their way to me. I would be perfectly happy if those comments came directly to commissioners at the same time they went to the city staff. I don't want to wait until five o'clock before the meeting to get those comments. I prefer to have the, if, if there's a bunch of them, and I'm not sure we're going to see 200 ever, but I, I want us to have the opportunity to review those and take them into context and even talk to the person if we want to, like we could at a public meeting. So that's where I come down on this. Thanks.
We got the ones tonight in advance and anybody that, you know, like you talked about public contact, anybody that sends me an email, I, I think I reply, I, I won't say a hundred percent because I might've missed one, but I'm probably up in the high nineties on replying to people and they don't always like the reply, but, but I try to keep candor in there. So that's not the issue at all. I think the transparency is there.
Well, I'm not talking about emailing them back. I'm saying when we're talking about a general agenda item and we say public comment, those are the ones, like we read out today. I thought that was doable. I thought that was inclusive and had their voice heard. So the rest of the public will know that, hey, there are people kind of speaking to what I'm thinking. I'm glad they sent that in. That's the way I saw it. But obviously, I'm, I may have been the only one who misinterpreted the resolution.
Well, I, like I said earlier, that resolution we passed um, has an expiration date. Um, and we can always revisit it. Um, and so I don't think it, also, I don't think this pandemic is going to necessarily be all solved. And going forward, we should probably have learned something from this process and maybe have some protocols. Um, but even if uh, we, if we have to go beyond June 30th, uh, we should be exploring how we do this in a more uh, transparent way that doesn't disclude live public comments like we are going to between now and June 30th, right? Is what the resolution said, um, as far as a general agenda item. We don't have the things in place to do that. I don't think that we're alone. As we saw in the presentation earlier, uh, there's very few cities in the state that have as much transparency as we do currently. Uh, I think it's probably even more indicative of our forward thinking and transparency that we're having this discussion right now in front of people that all, all, what, 18, 19 of them on Facebook uh, that are watching. Uh, I, I would be shocked if we didn't see a bunch of emails or a bunch of things. Uh, I don't want to err on that other than Commissioner Hassel walking around, reading those. I, I don't know that people would tune in. We'd have even fewer viewers. Um, uh, but I do want to say, let's not just say this means we don't have to talk to other, other uh, technological entities in a way to develop our poss, our, our capabilities going forward. Um, even if we don't have to apply them after June 30th, because we're in public, we're in live meetings, all of that's resolved, we still need to uh, figure out what, what we do if, if we're not, right? If we're still in these type of meetings, how do we incorporate the public? Because I am not willing to go into the rest of the year not having this uh, opportunity to have public comments. We're in a crisis, we're in a global pandemic, we're coming up on the peak of it. I'm okay doing, suspending this for now. Um, and being a representative, we were elected, people can reach out to us, they can talk to us, we can read their comments as we censor them ourselves. I encourage everybody to do that. I, all 18 people should email me right now from Facebook. Um, but uh, I, I don't see this as a, as a huge problem. We got to streamline this and let people get on um, with the, dealing with the city business between now and June 30th.
I don't know. I, I was not in favor of it, but I, if I get comments, I will probably read them out when it's commissioner comment time or when it's a general agenda comment time, because this is the time the community needs us the most. What I don't like about the Riley County Commissioners is this is exactly it. They don't have time for this type of conversation to happen. And just because we are doing a lot of things right is not the reason to not continue doing them right to the best of our abilities. Uh, the public does, I've never had nasty, profane emails come my way. Uh, I've had people that are very conscientious of what's going on around them and want to take the time to participate in this process, just like we had it for the Eco Diva or for public comments. Those were very rational comments. And so I want to keep them included in this conversation because this is their government. So I will take it upon myself to read some of those out loud as they pertain to a general agenda item. Uh, I have never had, like I said, a profane one come my way. Um, and I don't even know most of the people that email me. Uh, so I think we are looking at the worst of our community as opposed to the best. And uh, I think that this, in a time of crisis, people will not see us anywhere uh, talking about their business and their tax dollars. And that's extremely important to make ourselves available. Uh, I maybe have not been as clear in the resolution as I should have been, but I assumed that what I did tonight would kind of be what we were going to do in the future for other future meetings. But to me, it seems like I, uh, that is not what we had, uh, at least not what I had thought I, I had discussed it. And I wasn't as clear as I should have been, but I will read public comments. If they are mailed to me, I will read them as they pertain to the city agenda items we are talking about. And that's what, that is the expectation. People need to know that the community is also taking part of in some of these. We only had five or six on each of these. I don't see 200 people, 200 emails. I've never gotten 200 emails about anything.
Well, I have on some of the controversial issues in the past. That's been years ago. But for those of you out there that, you know, or think you don't have the ability to, to communicate, there's probably three primary methods. You know, one is you can call the city commission phone number that was recently put up online and you can leave a voice message and they will, it will translate into text and be given to each of the commissioners. You can also send in the form, you know, general comment. Now, one of the things I've noticed is I got one of those last week where the individual did not share anything except that he was a Manhattan resident. And that became anonymous. And that's one of the problems. Public uh, comment really shouldn't be anonymous. And, and I tried to, you know, reply to whatever email was there. It might've been bogus, couldn't tell the name, but I told the person that. I said, I'd appreciate knowing your name if we're going to talk about a certain, you know, topic. And then we've got our own individual phone numbers in many cases online and individual emails. So there's four ways there and some of us have Facebook pages. And we have to be careful, you won't see three commissioners discussing anything on a commission Facebook page because you get in trouble for that. So that's not because we're not trying to be transparent, we just don't want to get in trouble for, for coma violations. And so that's why you don't see that. You'll see individual commissioners have a page and, and if one says something on there, that's okay, but if we get a second one, we're in trouble. And so we stay away from that. But I think, uh, you know, there, there's enough, for me, that's the best we can do right now. And I fully agree, when this thing goes away, and it will eventually go away, uh, we go back to business like we've always done.
And I was only referring to the general agenda items. I wasn't talking about every email that comes our way every single day. I don't know if anybody cleared up anything, but.
Thought on that. We haven't heard from you on your iPhone there, I see. You're using iPhone six.
Yeah, I, my laptop died, forgot to bring home the battery and didn't realize this was going to be a two and a half hour meeting. So I had to switch to my Zoom app on my phone. Um, but no, I think, I think any commissioner that wants to uh, mention some public comment that they've gotten during the discussion of a general agenda item is, is totally appropriate. Um, and I think that, yeah, we, if, if an item's important to people, they will, they can take the time to type out a thing and send it through the city's website or contact one of us and ask us to share it. But so I, yeah, extraordinary time call for extraordinary measures, but they have to be limited, uh, because if this thing goes on much into the summer, we're going to have bigger problems than not taking public comment. There's going to be, people are not going to keep putting up with being cooped up at home, not being able to work, not being able to do their, their lives. And that's, and that's not going to last more than early part of summer, I think, because I'll be one of the people out there leading it. And so uh, that's where I think we're going to have bigger problems than just a little bit of some commentary and changing our, the way we're meeting. And so this will be fine for a few months, uh, and then we'll get back to business as usual.
I'd like, I'd like to ask Ron, what agenda item he thinks is going to have 200 at the April 7th meeting?
Well, and, and maybe there was a little miss. I was specifically thinking about open public comment. I mean, the first meeting of the month, we generally allow the, it's basically open mic. The only limitation we have is five minutes. And so I, I quite think there might be a lot. And so I quite think there might be a lot of opinions on the pandemic and how the community may or may not be responding to it. So that was my biggest concern. It wasn't the public comments on specific agenda items. So that was, that was where I'm at. I know the, I know the, the switchboard and the email system at the state for people trying to get answers to whether they were essential or not was jam-packed today. And the EOC at the state level went out to all the local EOC and said, you define it. Well, why did we have a statewide order if we're all going to define it differently? So I think as that goes on, there will be lots of folks that want to provide a comment on it. So Jared, you were going to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna, this is Jared Wassinger, just jump in. During the special meeting that we had for the St. Patrick's Day Parade and 5K, granted, this was Facebook, but we did receive over 300 comments on Facebook during that meeting because it impacted so many people. And then again, oh yeah, that'd be it, so.
Well, one of the things we don't do is do the Facebook stuff. But if people do email me and they are concerned about, you know, is the golf course part of this or not? And, and we're having a meeting, a city commission meeting. If there are a few of those concerns, I would probably address them during Commissioner comments. Because chances are there's more than one or two people that have those. But even in this pandemic, people do have a lot of concerns. I've gotten lots of emails about a variety of issues, but all of them were, you know, serious concerns. And, and, you know, they're all trying to navigate this uncharted territory and they're looking to us as leaders to help them. And I think that, that's where we fall as far as our responsibilities. And we only have public comment to open once a month. And if there are some comments that people do send my way and I think they are irrelevant, I will probably use my Commissioner comment time to address those issues because I haven't gotten a single frivolous email. People are very concerned about surroundings around them and they're looking for people to have that discussion with because they can't go anywhere. They're working remotely with children around them and without a job and trying to survive and, and they need a voice. And, and I think that's the role we all play. I'm sure all of you have gotten concerns during this pandemic about things that are serious issues. None of them were, you know, I would, I never had, I didn't have to delete a single one because they were just so serious, so.
Well, the problem is, is that we have so little power as the city commission during this problem, crisis, because the, between the federal government, state government and the county health people, they're the ones making all the decisions. And so people complain to us about something, it's like, we, we don't have any power to change any of this stuff. And that's one of the things, we're going to get probably a lot of people, and we already have got comments from people, well, why is this? Or what are you going to do about that? And it's like, that's not in our hands, it's outside of our realm because of some higher governmental authority taking, taking all of our decision-making away in situations like this. And that's, that's really the frustrating part for me is that we don't have a, we don't have the ability to really make any significant changes other than what we did tonight with the chamber.
I, I think we do have a lot of, more knowledge than most people give. I think, you know, oftentimes I send them to other places or give them as much feedback as we can. But never do I say, it's not the city's job. That's not what they want to hear. But I, as far as this discussion is concerned, if people have something that's going on, whether it's with their utilities or with their housing or whatever it is, you know, I don't mind commenting it when it's a Commissioner comment time. But during this session right here, it's different, so.
What I, what I think is, again, the most important thing is that we, the ground beneath us is not solid. We are still moving and we have the opportunity to adjust that resolution as the ground decides. But also, if we do receive an overwhelming number of, of people that are upset, like our city managers describing is a possibility, they, people want to, want to, they want to line up to thank us for how well we're handling everything. Or if they want to line up and be upset and yet they don't have a way to do that, that's when I feel it to be very important for the city manager, the mayor, to bring that forward and have an opportunity to have some type of digital town hall, some type of other format that addresses the community concern for this specific pandemic that is not necessarily going to stop and slow down the process of an everyday, normal business type. We, I think those are, that's why the ground is not solid beneath us. We may not need to do that. But if we do, I don't see anything that gives us any restriction in, in allowing that, that type of format to happen or rescinding that resolution and having a public comment in there as it's drafted. But so I, I would say let's proceed with what we have, right? And then if that arises, you have that opportunity to work with the city manager as the mayor to, to develop and bring us into a situation where we have some type of digital town hall, where people can have some filtering, some processor, so the vent can be let go of. People are going to need to vent if they are really struggling in ways that they don't feel like they can reach us between now and when this expires.
Well, for April 7th, I don't know if we answered your question, Ron.
Yeah, you did. No, I, I appreciate it. Obviously, this was the first time we've ever done this and so we're learning as we go. You know, I, I do think one of the things that, that I noticed just being on the radio this morning, Mayor, which was interesting as well, we, we had a three-way call into the radio show and, and there really isn't any way for them to take, take any calls from the public under that process. So it's not, we didn't really make it simple for folks to even submit the written comment. You had to kind of go find the place on where's the web agenda? Where's the link to make the comment? And so we, you know, one of the things I wanted to explore is, you know, just a simple email address to submit a public comment for a commission meeting. So that's a little different. We've got some issues as we, as you know, we used to publish all our email addresses. So we got a lot of junk mail that way and other things. So part of what I want to focus on is making that process simpler for folks, but also we do want to hear from them. And I do think that there are some mechanisms of creating, whether it's a digital town hall or maybe it's more of a modified Facebook Live program where we have a, some hosts that are having a discussion and can take questions as long as it's not a, a quorum of a governing body that all these other folks had to be noticed about. But that doesn't mean the mayor and I and a couple of doctors or specialists in a particular field couldn't host something like that and answer live questions that you all couldn't also view, whether it's real time or later. So, and submit questions in advance to be answered. So I think there's some mechanisms we could go to try and, and broaden that capability, but maybe it's not in the context of a quorum of an official commission meeting.
Ron, I think you're, I think that's a good idea. I think one of the things I noticed when we were on the radio this morning is they also couldn't do call-ins. So what I feel is, at a time when the community needs to hear from us the most or communicate, they can't. And if we can make the processes a little bit easier for emails or comments or whatever it is, I think that would be helpful. Not everybody is on social media. In fact, the people that need it the most are probably not on social media. You know, we have a lot of nursing homes and such where they're probably are watching it on TV. If the, most of them do watch something like a city commission meeting or read it in their paper or listen to K-Man. If there isn't a way to communicate other than a website, then, you know, we, we need to figure that out. But I think we'll navigate this just fine as long as we are all talking at different levels to a variety of its constituents, making sure we are taking care of their needs. And if not, we will find a way to make this better in the long run. But we need to be good listeners and we need to find a way for them to comment in any way. Like this ra, radio this morning, they couldn't call in, you know? And, and that's what I'm saying.
One thing that was mentioned earlier was by Commissioner Haddasall, I think, was that maybe we're not effective at answering, or we're not the solution to some of the people's problems. Maybe it's the federal government, maybe it's the state government, maybe it's no government. But what I think that we might be lacking by taking away this public comment opportunity is, could be resolved in some capacity by having, having the mayor and having the city manager know that we would like, what we can do is advocate for those concerns through resolutions or pushing up the chain to, these are the concerns that the city of Manhattan has, right? A, that you push on up. Those things you lose by, by not having a public comment that you might not see otherwise. So I, I would be looking for that. I don't know that we can solve that any other way. But I would think that those people that come to mind first are dealing with housing issues, rent, evictions, moratoriums, things even including airports that we don't have authority of as a local official. Yet as a city commission, we may be able to advocate towards the state level and a federal level. And we need to not be skirting that obligation from our constituents because they're going to look for us to be leaders of the city to push that up the chain rather than just them going to talk to their senator or congressman themselves. So that, can't lose that in the, the mix. And I just wanted to make sure that that was said in case any of the 12 people still listening were wanting to comment.
Yeah, I think, Ron, I think we will find a way to make sure we address the community concerns. That's our number one priority. So in any way that you can navigate that process with our city staff, with Chamber, with the EOC group would be extremely helpful. Certainly, this is a crisis for all of us, but at the same time, they're going to look for people. And we, we are on the front lines, so we are not in the, in the hospital. People are looking to something to hold on to, so.
I appreciate that feedback and that'll, that'll hopefully help round two next week. And appreciate your willingness to have a special meeting and to, I think this was good for us to have this. And thank you for your support for the economic development incentives. And I think that will go a long way, so appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Sorry about that. I'm glad I looked at my email.